And please join me for the pledge to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everybody here is okay out there?
And I did mute everybody for the pledge there, so we didn't get a lot of feedback. So if you're on the board, you'll need to unmute yourself. Everyone else, if you could keep yourself muted until it's your turn, that would be great.
All right, for board members, I'm gonna start with the roll call vote, roll call. Peter?
Let me help you out there, Peter.
Here.
Oh, there we go.
Ben? I see Ben. Ben, you gotta unmute. Nicole?
Here.
Rocko?
Here.
Joan?
Here.
Ahmed?
Ben is here.
Ben, okay. And Bob, I believe is away. And I don't see Ahmed yet. All right? We have a quorum at least?
We have six people?
Yes.
Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of this meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We've emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for public hearings tonight have been properly published.
All right. Good that. First order of business is South Hills Commons Public Hearing. I see Amy.
Hi, this is Amy Popper-Derry from Danstecosa, representing South Hills Commons.
Hi, Amy. Do you want to quickly go over what changes have been made since the last time we've talked?
Yes. We have provided a row of, a double row of arborvitae along the eastern edge of the parking lot to provide visual screening for the residential homes along 9D.
How?
Proposed plantings are supposed to start.
Sorry. I was wondering how high those go.
We're proposing them to be planted at four feet, and they can grow three feet a year.
Okay, continue.
So the double row allows for it to be densely planted and still allow for the proper spacing between each planting. The... So the apartments, the intent is to change the zoning from residential 20 to residential multifamily. And we're proposing four buildings, each with six units in them, each unit having two bedrooms. The rent is gonna be about $2,200 a month. There'll be background checks and credit checks, and they'll all be year leases at least. There'll be additional charges for pets, for dogs under 30 pounds. Dogs over 30 pounds will not be allowed. The parking, we've provided extra parking and extra snow storage. We're proposing 66 parking spaces at the moment. The code calls for 48. There was a request for substantial or significant guest parking, so without having an actual definition of what that would be, I did a study based on ITE parking generation. That study proposed 47 parking spaces, the code being 48. So the extra spaces, we would not be opposed to land banking them. We do have the space to add additional parking. The site lighting is in conformance with the town code requirement. And the vegetative screening will also provide light screening.
Okay, that sounds good.
I think that's about it.
All right, thanks. I do notice you've added a fence along the northern property boundary as well.
There's a fence along the northern property separating the condo property from this property.
I'll have to understand how that works.
There are also easements. What's that?
Have to understand how the fence works with the landscaping stuff, but we can get to that.
I've addressed that in a future submission, to move the landscaping back from the fence.
All right.
More towards the property.
Anything else?
There are easements, there's... What's that?
Go ahead, Amy.
There are easements on the property that... There's two. There is one that runs basically through where these two buildings are. It was filed in 1926, I believe, it was for a future road. We're in the process of dissolving that. There's a temporary construction easement for the sewer line, which runs within the yard setback here. But because the sewer line's constructed, I believe that that temporary easement is probably no longer in effect. But in any case, it's not, it's within the yard setback, so anything we're proposing on site doesn't cause any disruption to that easement.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Kristen for department recommendation?
Sure. So thank you, Amy, for hitting on some of those changes. The project's on for a public hearing this evening. Staff is recommending that the board open the public hearing and then adjourn it to be able to sort of digest any comments that are heard and work with the applicant subsequent to the hearing. The application's on for seeker review, and as Amy noted, a recommendation to the town board for zoning district change, site plan review, and architectural review. Just a couple of things to point out, just for everyone's benefit here. The application, when it was originally proposed, was circulated to OPRHP. And we have asked the applicant to resubmit because this project has changed from two buildings to four. OPRHP did provide a new letter indicating that they had, still had no concerns with the application. So that is a part of the official project record now. The applicant has begun a, or begun correspondence, and Amy might even be able to provide more information about this. But with DOT, DOT has provided preliminary comments, looking for a few studies. They just wanted some additional information. And as a result of this project, by nature anyway, the applicant is going to be responsible for seeking a highway work permit, so no construction will be able to begin without DOT's oversight and approval.
Okay, they've gotta negotiate that with the sidewalk and everything there.
Yep, but there are, there were a number of studies or, you know, details that were requested by DOT, and in the applicant's most recent response to their, to DOT's comments, indicated that they were working with DOT and would be providing details as they develop the information and submitted it to DOT. So we're still waiting on that information. The board would still need to be taking that into consideration before any approval. So that said, only a couple of other items that I would like to point out is again that the next steps for the planning board's purposes and review of this project include providing a recommendation to the town board about the zoning district change from R-20 to RM. But before that can happen, the board actually has to perform a seeker review. And, you know, the board should be considering, you know, at this point, you know, the applicant has gone through a number of renditions of the project, but if there are any outstanding concerns related to the number of units, this would absolutely be the time to be bringing that up. If not, you know, some of the other site elements that are being affected by the nature of the size and scope of the project include, you know, the number of parking spaces where, yes, the applicant is proposing a meeting town code and exceeding it, but we wanna be mindful of... I think there was some confusion about the last conversation regarding parking. 48 parking spaces are required per code. That does incorporate, it's not in addition to, the accessible parking. So we wanna make sure that there's enough accessible parking, enough tenant parking, and enough guest parking.
Yes.
So it's just finding the sweet spot, and what is the appropriate number, without being excessive and contributing to impervious surface on the site, which factors into SWIP review and other environmental concerns.
I mean, it might be good to do some land banking, as Amy suggested to...
Well, it might not be necessary, but I think that that's a conversation that we could bring our traffic engineer into. And I think this was a great way to take that first step into that conversation.
Yeah, just now there was a concern of the neighboring condos that...
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That visitors to this site don't park on there.
Absolutely.
So you have to have enough for visitors here.
Yeah. And just a couple of other items. One being that the refuse enclosure is now proposed at the back end of the single-family homes. I think it would be a preference of the board to be moving that onto the other side of the property, south of the buildings. I know that there were site constraints or circulation issues where it was previously proposed, but perhaps we can take a look at that again, because I don't think it's ideal to be putting a refuse enclosure. Even with the buffering, I just, I don't know if that makes a lot of sense or is appropriate. But again, that's up to the board, it's just staff bringing it to your attention. The color of the fencing proposed on the northern property line is a white coloring, PVC. Is that appropriate? You know, are you looking for a more natural, neutral aesthetic? And again, there's a number of comments, you know, but it's a moving target, a work in progress, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna keep working through these with the applicant. So I think those are some of the larger items at this point from planning. So again, we're recommending opening and adjourning the public hearing and deferring action with comments. And I will point out that we do also have Carol Knapp, our environmental consultant, involved with the review of this project, and our traffic consultant, Mark Patraro of GMC. So we are sort of hitting this in multiple review aspects.
Sounds good, yeah, they've definitely made progress. I like breaking it up into four smaller buildings that are more on the scale of the houses as well.
Absolutely.
And the architecture looks good, to me, anyway. But we'll get into that. All right, thanks, Kristen. As you indicated, it's on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Ahmed, did you ever join the call? Okay, thought I heard.
Okay, so Amy, if you wouldn't mind unsharing for the moment? And I'm gonna go through and see if there's anybody who would like to divide public comment. You can raise your hand if you're on the Zoom, or just unmute yourself and let us know. If you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself.
Again, we'll be adjourning this public hearing, so you'll have another opportunity, but...
I know there are a couple of...
Please don't hesitate to...
Folks from the neighborhood that are on the call, but I'm not seeing anybody indicating...
Hi.
Oh, there we go.
Can I talk?
Okay.
Sure.
I don't know how to raise my hand all of a sudden.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, unmuting is fine, that works.
That works, and we've got everybody's letters as well.
Yes, so go ahead and tell us who you are, and if you can give us your comments.
Okay, me, right? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Ally. I live at 28, 21 Route 90, I'm the house. The buildings are gonna be lining like two sides of my property. I've sent in my comments, I've talked about them here before. I don't really think I have to go through all of them. As far as the apartment buildings, do we know how many square feet they are? Because the price went up considerably. I'm just curious how many square feet there are.
Each building is 4,436 square feet.
Can we break that down to each apartment?
Amy, do you have that number roughly?
Amy, you're on mute.
They're all two-bedroom apartments, I think.
There are six two-bedroom apartments in each building, and the total is 4,436 square feet, so...
All right, all you have to do is divide by six. They're about 800 square feet.
So it's pretty small. For $2,200, I'm just, I'm worried about this plan. I think you have my comments. I'm worried about all of this traffic behind my house. It's also a very congested area already, the road is very dangerous to get in and out of. There's no school bus stop sign over here, and there's a school bus stop. And I'm wondering if we're gonna, you know, lower the speed limit, put in an additional traffic light. I know you guys have talked about the buffer. I'm still worried about the buffer, I think that it's gonna change the way we live around here. I think that the woods in the back of our house gives us a little bit of a recluse from the busy road, and I don't, I just, I wish that we could build some houses behind there and not huge apartment buildings that are gonna tower over us, so that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments. I mean, we should be trying to address the school bus stop if that's needed in that area. All right, anyone else on the call tonight?
Let's see, I have Amy and George. Did I raise their hand?
Hi, Amy Hall here and George Hirsch. We're, we live in 2833 Route 90, so the neighboring property. And just similar concerns, worried about congestion and just the fact that it is gonna be multi-family homes in quite a few of them, and just worry about mainly just congestion on the road and ease of access with that, with all the additional people.
All right, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter?
And Mr. Chairman, you may wanna note that, for the record, that there were other additional comments received in writing? And those are part of the record?
I said we have received some comments, and one from Marie Pinion, and another one from the Chanticleer condos as well.
And those have been distributed to all the board members as well?
Yes. All right, and as I said, we have another opportunity, since we're just adjourning this. So I move we adjourn this to public hearing to April...
Fifteenth.
April 15th, tax day, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we'll be able to make the submission on Monday. So if we could get on for the March meeting, that would be good.
All right, if you don't make it, we can always adjourn it again, so...
Okay. Thank you.
What's the March meeting date?
The March meeting date is the 18th.
Eighteenth, yeah. And we adjourn the public hearing to March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Let me move on to any issues with engineering, Swift, Don?
Oh, yeah, we still have some SWIP comments and some general drainage comments as well. It's probably the biggest part of our letter.
And do you have any comments one way or the other on land banking some parking? Or is the SWIP gonna be sufficient to cover everything?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you very well there.
So I was wondering if they land banked some parking, would that help the SWIP? Or the SWIP is fine? Whatever...
We don't know the answer to that yet. They're planning to infiltrate all of the water. So if, you know, if there's less water to infiltrate, that should make their system smaller, so it'll probably be better.
We can consider porous pavement too for landing parking spaces.
Yes, that's...
Or pavers that.
If it is added later, the system has to take care of it as well, that's true.
Right.
All right.
And Mark is on as well.
Yep, that's next. Mark, can you say anything about the traffic and/or parking?
Yeah, so we had a comment letter that we had prepared. There was an as-of-right analysis that was prepared by the applicant. We had a few comments on that as it relates to... One, there was provided the daily trips for the proposed, for the as-of-right development. Little more, for better comparison purposes, we request the peak hour of adjacent street traffic between 7:00 and 9:00 and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on a weekday for the as-of-right and for the proposed development. And also, just be aware to look at the, how the projections are calculated based on average rate or the equation. There's guidance in ITE about which to use and when. And then the applicant had used a mid-rise multifamily housing land use when they should have used the low-rise based on the number of floors. So that should be changed in the as-of-right analysis as well for the comparison purposes. Lastly, we provided some data from ITE for the parking demand for this use based on the demand, it's equating to 40 spaces that are at a peak demand. So we were looking for justification for the additional 18 spaces above the town requirement. I know there was talk of land banking. That's something that could be, you know, entertained and might be feasible, but just would need better backup on that from the applicant's side.
Would the town requirement include spaces for visitors? Because that's what one of my concerns is, because the condos have that concern.
The, it, I believe it does. I didn't, wasn't there with the town made those requirements? But based on the parking demand for ITE, those demand includes the visitor parking spaces. Generally, visitor parking is a little less than 10% of the overall parking demand. So that's something to consider possibly if we wanna just add some additional spaces above the 48, just for additional parking spaces for visitors if we wanna have an access.
All right, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
It's time we'll go around the, go around the board for comments. Start with Peter this time?
Okay. First, I'd like to ask a question of the town, the board attorney. And that is reading the letters from the neighboring property owners. I think there's some misunderstanding exactly what the role is of the planning board and what the role is of the town board in this application. Could you, just for their benefit, could you briefly describe the differences between our participation and the town board's participation here?
Absolutely. So this, the planning board has two roles, well, actually three if you count the environmental analysis. But the predominant role for the planning board is to analyze the site as proposed as if the multifamily zoning were granted. So we are analyzing it as if the board, the town board, has already granted the zoning, and the plan is analyzed in those conditions. The other part is that the planning board makes a recommendation to the town board concerning whether the property should be rezoned or not. And that, part of the reason we do the analysis of the potential is because that's the only way to do the environmental analysis, is to assume that it gets granted. And so you look at, in essence, sort of a worst-case scenario for the environment. You wanna make sure you've mitigated any potential adverse. The town board is the only entity that will be involved in whether the property gets rezoned or not. And so any concerns about whether the property, whether a multifamily versus a single-family zoning is appropriate for this parcel is more appropriately addressed to the town board, because this board only makes a recommendation to the town board. And the decision on that issue... It's not perfect, but I'm better than that. The decision on that issue is a town board decision. So this, the planning board makes a recommendation concerning the zoning, but the zoning, the change in zoning is a legislative function, which is the town board.
I believe the town board would...
Thank you.
With the town board holding a hearing on that also, Lisa?
Yes.
I have a question for Don Beer.
Peter, before we jump away from that, Carl was just asking here in the room if we could confirm, Lisa, also, that when this application does make its way to the town board, it is going to be noticing a public hearing. So in essence, the residents will further receive another round of public hearing notices. I just wanted to confirm that one way or the other now, because Carl was asking.
I believe that that's the case, because I believe that the rezoning has to be done by way of a local law, and all local laws require public hearing. So I believe that there will be. And even if there, it wasn't an absolute requirement, I'm pretty sure that the town board always does public hearings on zoning changes. So I believe they are required.
Okay, great, thanks for clarifying. Okay, go ahead, Peter, with your comments.
A question for the, Don Beer? Don Beer, one?
I am.
Great. Don, they're using these Coltech recharger chambers. Is that a good application for this site?
I think it can be. We don't really have the information yet to be able to evaluate the, you know, the recharge to the groundwater. But, you know, if the park tests and deep tests and all that work out, yes, I think it's a, it's a fine practice.
Okay. As you know, I'm, really, I think we're all concerned about it. You know, you have a 20% slope directly behind those buildings. So I know that you'll take a very close look at that.
We will, thank you.
I have also a question about, for the applicant's engineer. And that is, on the northern boundary, you have plantings of eastern white pine. Could you tell me what the distance is between those plantings?
Yes, I can, it's about... About 20 feet between plantings. There isn't the existing tree line that's going to remain there too.
I beg your pardon?
There's the existing tree lines going to remain. You're gonna have the plants that you planted.
Yeah, those, the primary decision was trees, though. I mean, they're not really using it for a buffer.
Right, so the new, the new trees are planted about 20 feet on center, and we're proposing the fence along that line as well. So looking at it from the condominium, you would see the fence. The trees would then be behind the fence, and then the existing tree line would be behind the new plantings.
Does the fence come only in white?
No, we're open to suggestion on what the board prefers.
Could you provide us with some different colors, just so we could take a look?
Do you have a material preference as well?
Well, I'm not crazy about the PVC, but if you have something else that's low maintenance...
Well, would you prefer a densely packed row of arborvitae along that line? Which is very low maintenance, and...
I think that when you originally had made the proposal, that was, that would have been treed, that whole northern boundary.
I mean, I defer to the board on what they'd prefer to see there.
If I may, we received a comment out of the public that there was a request from the tenants to the north for a fence perhaps. So, for what it's worth, that's...
I think last time that, yeah, the condo, whoever was speaking on their behalf said the fence might protect also privacy of the apartment users in their patio or whatever's out in the back. So it's something to be considered, but I think we needed a little bit of negotiation back and forth here to understand what type of building materials, you know. A natural kind of material, I think, would be, would be better suited than a stark white vinyl. If a fence was to happen. Go ahead, Peter.
That choice of the arborvitae on the, would be the eastern border. That's a good choice. I mean, those are very fast growers, and I think that's a good choice for that, for that buffer.
Okay, that's good, good to know.
That's all I have.
Maybe a wood composite material for a fence as an option? Is that better?
Yeah, I think that might, something that looks more natural fit into, so it's not standing out so much. But we'll see what other, see what other board members say as well as we go through. All right, next is Ben.
Yeah, I have a question for the traffic consultant. He said they used a mid, mid-height building and they should have used a low-rise. Would that make a difference in the traffic?
Yes. So they, they, they used mid-rise, which is a building that can, contains three to ten floors. Low-rise is anything less than that. So it would generate different traffic if they use the lower rise.
Less, more?
Less. Sorry, more. It would be more.
I just, I, I used an old version and it was, this did, a two-story building did fit in the fourth version for that land use. So I'll, I'll revise it.
Well, just, just doing it really quickly. The new, the new version will gen, would generate twelve trips in the A M. hour and seventeen trips in the P M. hour based on a low-rise use for twenty-four units.
Twelve in the A M. and how many in the P M.?
Seventeen.
Thank you.
That's, that would be more than what you have now?
Yeah, the mid, the mid-rise would be lower if you did that same unit count for the mid-rise.
Seems backwards.
Yeah, so you get a higher generation, the lower levels you have.
Not quite intuitive.
Okay. I noticed there's decks on some of the condos. They don't have any roofs on them, but on the first floor, will there be patios also?
Yes, there will be patios and there was a written comment in the latest review letter requesting roofs over the second floor patio. So we are gonna add that.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's it. That's what I have.
Thank you, Ben. Nicole?
Wow, a lot of my questions are being answered already. But I, I want to talk about the, the neighbors for a second. They're right. With this project, there's going to be an increase in traffic. And for the life of me, I couldn't remember exactly what the speed limit was on ninety since it's been a long time since I've been down that way, since majority of us are working and pretty much living here at our houses. Do you know exactly what the speed limit is currently on ninety where this project is going to be? Is it forty, forty-five?
I think it's, I think it's still forty.
I want to say forty, it might be.
I think it's still forty because of transitions to thirty.
It's forty.
Yeah, transitions to thirty right at the village line.
Okay, it, it was just a little concerning to me to, to hear some of those comments of neighbors stating that they're almost rear-ended, trying to get into their houses. You know, one, one neighbor stated that she was almost hit while getting her mail. And this isn't, this is gonna add to the problem. So, you know, I don't know that we can, but maybe we can make a comment here and maybe the town board can do something about it. Maybe lowering the speed limit and/or talking about some type of light there so that we can lower the speed and make it a little bit safer. I also heard, I, I also read in one of the letters that there's a school bus stop right there. You know, I have children. I know that it could be very dangerous if cars don't slow down. So I think we need to think about this, look at this and, and see what we can do. I think that's my only comment. Thanks.
I think Route ID is a county road though, right?
It's not, it's not a town road.
Right. So it's not within the town board's jurisdiction either to do anything about the speed limit there.
State D O T. It is a, it, it does seem confusing there sometimes because right after the mall, it's, it's not that long of a distance before the village. And it's forty, forty miles an hour and then drops to the thirty at the village line. But it may be appropriate to have that whole section with houses along there to be thirty. But that's up to, you know, maybe you can bring it up with the state D O T. when you're talking about the, the project. With them, that would be good to do. All right, moving on to comments from Rocco.
First of all, I'd like to echo what everyone has said already. But I, I'd like to ask the applicant about the screening and the size of the variety that they're thinking about putting in there. Is, is four feet an optimal number or is that just what you thought would be a, a good to start in point? Because I would think that we might want to start a little taller and would provide the screening to those homes at a much quicker pace, especially if they grow as quickly as you say they do. That's one of my comments.
We'll look into it. We'll look into it. I, the price obviously of the plantings goes up the bigger they are, so. We'll look into it.
Right, but there's privacy concerns here also. I mean, so we had, you gotta weigh both of those.
Well, I mean, if it's developed as of right, there could be a house right, right on the, you know, at the yard setback. So we're actually providing more privacy than would potentially be provided if it was developed as a residential.
Right. I don't want to go back and forth, but it's a, if it's a house, there's only a few people. You've got twenty-four apartments back there and you multiply that out. I don't know, it's a three and a half people per apartment, et cetera. So the other question would be a comment in regarding the fencing. If, from my perspective, I would like to see a natural material out there. Anything other than white because I think white will stand out. Composite, I'm not sure is any better than PVC and that thing unless it's got a natural wood aspect to it. I know over time they can, whatever, I mean, anyway, so that's my preference. I, I know that the chairman asked what that would be. Okay, so, so those are my two comments. And then when the, when we get more information about the grade and, and the swift issues, because there's a, quite a slope back there. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Rocco. Joan?
Hi, yeah, I agree with the fence comments generally that my preference would be a natural color for that fencing. And I had a question for the traffic study. Mark, does, I probably should know this, but does the traffic study take into consideration the current usage on ninety presently? Is that part of the analysis?
So they did.
Really focusing on the in and out of the project?
So they did an as of right analysis where they compared a single-family as of right development to the proposed development in their analysis. They didn't, you know, they didn't do a study of what the intersection operations are on the road. It's just a trip comparison between the as of right and the proposed development.
Okay, all right. I was just thinking if there was any consideration being looked at ninety right now, it's probably not reflective of what it normally is just because of the pandemic. Because that is a very congested area under normal times with the mall, Route Nine. That's how a lot of people get down to the train station. But just, I guess that's not part of the analysis now, so.
Yeah, typically if a study is done nowadays, you typically try to use record count data and projecting out to the future conditions. So you try to get data before the pandemic happened. That's typical as of times right now.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only comments.
Joan, for what it's worth, it's Kristen. I just wanted to add that the D O T. in November did request of the applicant a traffic study as part of materials they wanted to see. So I'm not sure of Amy or Brian in your office, Amy, if there is an update about that or how you're proceeding with that.
Well, we're working with the D O T. as far as the submission goes. I, they asked for a full traffic study. I don't.
Yeah, there was a list of comments in November, so I, I don't know. I, and that's why I was saying before that they, I don't know who actually did the response to comments for the, on behalf of the planning board, but, or, or for the planning board, I'm sorry. It just said that you guys were working with D O T. and, and responding and as materials became available, they would be provided. So it was a little bit vague, so we just wanted to ask because that is pertinent information moving forward.
Right. Okay.
And I, and as you talked to D O T. as well, is what we talked about, the, it has gotten busier over the years on that section of road, so it, it may be appropriate to go to thirty miles an hour. I know it's difficult for some residents to turn left out of those houses as well, so.
I'll definitely mention it. I don't know how easy they are about making changes like that. I only dealt with maybe one or two other projects where we requested a speed reduction and I don't remember it being very successful, but I'll give it a shot.
I think it's only one sign along that stretch of road, so. And then it changes to thirty at the village line, so people are slowing down there anyway.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be. All right. Let's see, Ahmed, did you join by any chance? Seeing that.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, all right.
I'm Marco, unfortunately.
Oh, oh, yes, you have your name, wrong name. That's why I didn't notice you there. So do you have any comments on this? We'll add you to the, do you have any comments on this project?
No, nothing from me.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for joining. We do have a note, we do have a full board of seven members at this point. All right, my comments, it looks like, you know, a lot of you guys covered it. The natural fence material, I think, is useful. You already talked about the covered balconies. Yeah, I was just about to touch that. Architecture looks good. I will note the plans still show the Route Ninety sidewalk is only four feet. It should be five feet wide. And I don't know, we talked about the fence, natural color. I think that's probably, in all the arborvitae are probably a better choice than a, than another fence for the other neighbors, I would think. Trash location, where did it move from before? It's now closer to the house. Was that out by the?
It was, I think it was next to Building Four, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was.
But I think the, the reason of the movement to where it is now is that it's more centrally located for the residents of the apartment.
Right.
And it is, it is an enclosure and it is also a hundred and sixty feet to the residence, the closest residence. So you have the arborvitae screening it and the trash enclosure structure and then the distance.
Is that the masonry structure or is there a type of fence around that?
We are showing a brick structure, brick masonry structure.
Okay. It's tough to be too far away from a member living in an apartment. It's tough to be too far from the trash. Any other board members have comments on the trash location?
I was originally concerned that it was in a present location, but I do think that that's a fair argument to have it centrally located to the, all the units. So I would agree with you, Carl. Unless there's another spot to make it centrally located that makes it a little further from the, the residences.
Yeah, it would have to be in between the buildings, two and three perhaps. That's where the, that gets into the.
And they also need to be able to pick it up, so that would eliminate.
Yeah, there's a whole.
That would eliminate access to the island and the recreation center area.
Right, right. So that's, it's not an optimal place to put it there either, so. All right, it's, is, is enclosed and screened. All right, any other comments from anyone? I think everything's been covered for, for now, so I guess we're ready for a motion.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following one through ten.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. And thanks for enhancing the screening with the arborvitae and continue to work with staff and Carol to flush that out completely. And the northern fence. All right.
Okay.
Take care, Amy.
Have a good night.
Next up is One Duchess Avenue.
Good thing.
Lou hanging out.
Lou's Calvin for the applicant.
Hey, Lou.
Hi. We're here tonight on the third phase of One Duchess Ave. That's the mixed-use development in the city and the town adjacent to the Riverfront Park. We gave an overview at the last meeting, so I'm not sure you need to dwell on the points at this point and, and it's well-covered in the project assessment and the comments of Kristen and Liz. So we submitted a, you had asked us to give a more detailed response to the comments that we received in the November, in November. And we had done that, submitted it to the board and all the consultants in January. They've reviewed that and they've come back with a few. I don't believe any of them are substantive at this point. It's a more matter of clarification and some detail and, and ensuring that the, the plans match the project assessment and things of that nature. So there's really nothing substantive that I'm aware of.
All right.
We are ready to respond to your comments tonight. We have our engineer and our architect here. And if possible, we hope to, you know, close the public hearing tonight or as, as was recommended by Kristen at the April fifteenth meeting. And I have, I'd like to hear from the board and we have, if you have any questions of us, all of us, me or the architect or our engineer, Dominic, we're ready.
All right, thanks. I mean, we typically leave the public hearing up until we're finit, till we do seeker and go through that. But we'll, we'll let Kristen weigh in here on her, on the board's comments on that.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Lou, for the overview. I appreciate it. So the application is in for a public hearing this evening. Staff is recommending opening and adjourning that until you are ready to make a decision. However, that is up to, you know, the board. You can have a discussion based on what you've seen and what you hear from the applicant. The application's also on for seeker review. Again, the town board actually, I'm so sorry, the city of Poughkeepsie actually served as a lead agency for this project. And on behalf of the town, Liz Axelson with C P L. will be providing you with an update on the review of the project's assessment provided on behalf of this project, which the planning board is responsible for reviewing and providing findings for, adopting findings for. The project is also on for coastal consistency review, site plan review, aquatic resources permit review and architectural review. The project does have quite a history, but we are moving, you know, moving along as Lou indicated. The applicant provided a coastal assessment form, which has now been reviewed by the town staff. And there were some minor comments. We were just looking to bulk up some of that documentation. And there were some minor comments. We were just looking to bulk up some of that documentation and Lou has already acknowledged that. We've had a conversation subsequent to their receipt of these. But, you know, the information is there, it's just a matter of making sure it's all documented as part of that form, because the board does have to act on that. Coastal consistency review. There were still, you know, a number of site plan related comments, again, going back to a couple of items that seem to keep rearing their head. One of them being the refuse enclosure being placed along the riverfront walk area. You know, I know the board has brought up in the past that it would be preferable to locate that elsewhere on site. So staff actually went so far as to ask the applicant maybe weigh in on what is the city doing? Is it possible to relocate the refuse enclosure to another part of the site? And perhaps omit a couple of parking spaces while still meeting any requirements that were set forth in the town board resolution or other in the town code. So that's something that we would probably be following up on subsequent to this evening, but worth maybe a conversation with the applicant. We were also looking for some more formalized, you know, documentation as it related to the Riverfront Park. We're looking at ownership and maintenance long-term, so we need some kind of documentation as it relates to that. Additionally, a recreation fee in lieu of parkland will actually be required per bedroom. This is something that's required by town code. It has been documented previously, but we wanted to bring it up again because it is something that's permitted prior to site plan signature. Let's see, pedestrian connections throughout the site to the Riverfront Walk and just in and around the site. We want to make sure we're paying attention to that. Taking a look at snow storage, were there calculations used? If so, how did you do it? Provide that information to us. And it goes on, so it's, you know, you do have these comments in your recommendation letter from the planning department. Again, recommending opening and adjourning the public hearing and deferring action with comments to further, you know, complete the project for your decision. I also just wanted to remind you too that Mark Potaro did review this project, so he is on the line to.
And Liz is on.
And Liz, of course, yes. And done.
Yep, we'll get them all. All right, yeah, you mentioned the trash. I know the city, the city construction is going, going along very well there. A lot of people moved in, but I don't, yeah, I don't think any trash is near the the river on the city side, so I don't know what, where it is exactly.
Can I address some of those comments now, or I can wait for others, whatever your preference?
If you had any comments on the trash, maybe you could mention that right now, because we were trying to discuss that.
Sure, so we have located up at the, currently it's at the northwest corner of the project. We could put it in the northeast corner of the project and, you know, actually not necessarily lose any spaces because we could put spaces where the dumpster enclosure is now. We would prefer actually to consolidate the collection with the city, you know, and just have it all in one place. I don't know how, if the town accept that, 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 you know, because we operate as one community, that's really something that we could do. I don't, you know, maybe even just have additional parking spaces now with, with, if you're concerned that we would break it up in the future, which will not be done. That's how we could address that, but we would be glad to have all the refuse collection in one place. Right now, it's in the city.
Do you have like a gator that goes around then or something that pulls it into the one place?
Say that again.
Do you have a gator or something that drives around?
We don't have a gate between, we don't have a gate between the town and the city.
I meant a little vehicle, vehicle of some sort.
As you enter the project.
No, Lou, he's talking about the collection.
There really won't be differentiation between the town and the city parcels. In fact, because of the buildings, the residential buildings in the town now mirroring four of the buildings we have in the city, it will look like one community, which is, you know, preferred.
The architecture is going to be great. I think what I was trying to refer to is like, if the trash is still in that one city location, how far is it away for people to get to empty their trash? How is the, how is the trash moved around?
We collect it at the building and then we put it into the trash for collection by the garbage refuse company.
Okay, so.
There are that.
Each building has their own collection.
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, there'll be no schlepping.
That's.
Or driving.
Wanted to make sure how that worked. All right, let's go to Don from engineering standpoint. Do you have any comments first before, before Liz chimes in?
We have our typical comment about SWIP. We did receive a SWIP. There was an amendment, which we did not receive, or addendum, I should say, that we still need to take a look at. And our only other comment would be the transportation corporation and getting everything worked out between the city and the town as far as billing and reading and all of that stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to address the SWIP, obviously is something that either Dominic can address now or in response and we're just touch base with Don and Andy. Regarding the.
Transportation.
Oh, the Transportation Corp. I didn't want to run this by Lisa or Jim Nelson. I'm not, you know, if we need it, we'll need it, but I'm not entirely convinced that if, if the system was understood, we would, whether we would need it or not. Because the main, the, the water mains are in the common area for the association, for the condominium. So, you know, the concern about different ownership may not be as much of a concern as initial blush. But if I could talk to Lisa about that and, you know, it's, it's, I think it's more of a legal call because you're compelled to do it or not, you know, based on the way it's laid out. Certainly, the town and the city will have to work out the billing event, but I, I would like to just visit that and whatever, you know, is the ultimate decision, we will go with.
So I'm happy to talk to you about it, but it's really more of a town attorney thing. So maybe what we'll do is we'll set up a call with you and me and Jim Nelson and probably Don or Liz on it also. And maybe, you know, we'll see who needs to be on it, but we're certainly willing to have that conversation with you.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
I think the other, the other place where someone will weigh in will be the health department, so they probably should be included.
All right, yeah, it sounds like a good meeting to do then, get things moving along. All right, thanks, Don. Liz, you're up.
Hello, this is Liz Axelson, planning consultant to the Poughkeepsie Planning Board from CPL. So I did a review, I think it was dated February 5th, and a lot of progress was made on the project assessment and there are just a couple of key points. I'm just going to bore you for a moment or two with the lineage. So each time a board, like the city of Poughkeepsie, has had to do a decision, they had to do a seeker findings. So the city of Poughkeepsie was a lead agency for the overall project, they did a seeker findings. When the application came to the town board in the town of Poughkeepsie, they also had to look at a project assessment, which is based on the prior findings. And the town of Poughkeepsie started looking at around 2014. And that was for the town board to consider rezoning to the waterfront historic overlay district, Wahod. And they ended up doing a denial in 2016, noting specific development criteria that they were concerned about. And so then the project came back with an updated project assessment to try to move forward with SECR. And the town board eventually did do a findings and that was in 2016. Let's see.
2020, please.
2020, thanks for correcting me. So, so going back, the first town board findings to deny was 2014. I'm sorry, was based on a plan dated 2014, basically. The town board's findings to rezon was based on a plan dated 2019. And the current plans are dated 2021. And the reason I'm saying that is there's a project impact table that's very central to how the seeker review is quantified for the planning board to ultimately look, do their seeker review and end up doing a seeker findings. So one of the core sets of comments has to do with making those numbers that quantify what is this development, what are the impacts, what are the mitigations? So there's been some back and forth about that and what I'm ultimately hoping is that you end up with a site plan that shows those project impacts. And that information will also be in the project assessment. Things will be all buttoned up nicely, it'll all make sense, you can see that the project is mitigating things appropriately based on the numbers. So that's one point. There are some minor ones. And then the other one is that this project has been through brownfield redevelopment and Lou, correct me if I'm using the wrong language. It's been through brownfields cleanup program and they have a certificate of completion, which is great. That was a great undertaking, it's done. DEC issued a very specific document called the certificate of completion. And so that has been addressed to some degree in the project assessment, but I feel that the SECR review needs to be demonstrated to a certain degree in the site plans that the planning board ultimately approves. So I did a review and provided an attachment and highlighted some language from the certificate of completion that I would like to see as plan notation as part of the planning board moving forward with SECR and site plan. So those are my biggies. And hopefully we'll, we'll move forward and things will get buttoned up. Any questions?
If I may, I'd like to respond to some of Liz's comments. First, Liz, when you described how incomplete the second project assessment was, I took it a little personally. Because I thought it was really well done, but in the end, I read your comments and again, I don't think they were substantive, but really putting a note here and maybe a little clarification. Now, let me first describe the certificate of completion. So the certificate of completion and the site management plan, which I think is your biggest concern, is what is done with the project after it's all cleaned up and how it operates. Much of the site management plan was describing how we should construct and, you know, all those details. So that's not really relevant for the town at this point. What is relevant and which I thought I had sufficiently explained in the project assessment was some of the salient points of what needs to be focused on for any work that, that's done on this, you know, on the site now. You know, no vegetable plantings, no, you know, just a variety of things. Now, I thought I did that in the project assessment. What I missed, and I think you're saying now, is that you would like to see some of those notes on the site plans themselves. The notes that you highlighted from the COC, that's a lot of noting. And I don't, you know, so I don't know, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Orico figure out if he can fit that or if we have to condense it a little so that you understand, you know, so that the people reading the plan know, oh, okay, these are things that we need to address. But, so, but we will address that. We will try and, within the plans themselves, which I think was your biggest concern, if you look at the plans, you will know there are certain acts that must be done, some tasks that are specifically addressing the brownfields themselves. So we will take care of that.
Yep.
And I'm just going to suggest one way to handle that. Done this on other project would be to pass back and forth some draft plan notation language and get it hammered out before you plunk it onto the plans. Just a thought.
I appreciate that. And I, I was going to mention to the board that rather than have another round that maybe we missed the specifics of what the consultants and F would like to see. I may touch base with Kristin. I've already called up Christina, you know, to talk about the potential for a variance, but we're going to move the dumpster, so I don't really think that's a concern. I was also going to point out that actually in the waterfront housing overlay district, the, the board itself has the right to set the boundaries. So I was hoping that that would satisfy Christina that we really didn't need a variance if the board itself felt that this was well-planned design. The other thing I'd like to mention is the project table. For the project table, you've given us our new headings, so we're going to fix that. And the, and it will mimic in my, in our project assessment, what is on the site plan itself. We have one technical issue, and I don't know whom I should speak to about that, but in the, when the, the boxes were placed by Duchess County and they created the tax lots. That's there, but what they don't recognize is that those buildings are, you know, they have ins and outs with little balconies and plantings and the footprint of the building is a little more sophisticated than the tax lot. And so whereas we have a square footage now and we, what, what my surveyor showed is that maybe we could give the, I forget what word he used, but the expanded square footage and we can give that meets and bounds, which CPL had asked for. But subject to when we have the required ASBILT, we would have much more precision when the, you know, and you would have. So I'm hoping, and, and of course, that will affect how precise our table looks. You know, is it 13,753 or is it 14,000, you know, things like that. So I'm hoping that there will be a little leeway by consultants such as yourself in, 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 in the approximation and that the exact precision of those buildings will be in place when we give you the ASBILTS. So that was our concern. We were talking about it today and it became, you know, then we said, well, wait a minute. If you have this, then this will change and that, then you have percentages and it. So I'm hoping that if we give the big picture without like worrying about a few hundred square feet now, that it will satisfy your concern that the board knows what those, you know, you know, how it progressed. 2014, 2019, 2021. So I'm hoping that you will allow us that leeway and we can talk about it. We'll give you that snapshot soon when we figure that out and, and maybe the board will see its way clear to having that lack of precision now, because it's not like it's a lot or a home, it's, it's a condominium. And the percentages of ownership aren't really going to change. So, you know, hopefully you guys would allow us that latitude at this point. The other thing is, well, that's actually it, the project table and the site management plan. And that's pretty much it, because most of your other comments were, you know, to make sure everything matched up, lined up nicely and, you know, give a little more explanation. And of course, the brownfields, which I just addressed. So hopefully we'll get it right this last time.
Yep, it's a big project, so there are lots of little details to iron out. Any comments further, Liz, on that?
No, just that I, if, I didn't mean to say that it was incomplete, I just meant to say it was kind of more technical. We're closer, we're so close, so.
I see you have fewer comments.
I knew what you meant. I didn't really, I, I knew what you meant.
Yeah, it's all right.
Fewer comments.
I would have liked almost complete or not quite complete. Anyhow, I'm, I'm kidding a little, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys, and let's go to lastly, Mark, for any comments on traffic and parking.
Yeah, so I provided a, a review letter for this. So the first comment, we reviewed the secret project assessment. There was talks in the previous assessment of improvements at the intersection of Fairview Avenue and Cedar Street. The current project assessment now mentions that there are no longer improvements needed, alterations needed. So we really just want clarification from the applicant of what those improvements were and what considered by others. Secondly, kind of reiterates what other comments have been provided already about providing a designated pedestrian route for residents and commercial patrons to the waterfront. Right now, the access for the waterfront is misaligned. Right now, the access for the waterfront is misaligned with some of the curb ramps and other sidewalk accesses within the site and really be better suited to be aligned and the crossings be perpendicular to the roadway as a typical crosswalk location. So that, that's our second comment. Last comment is really, as it relates to the turning plan, to provide the turning template and vehicle profile with dimensions for the refuge truck and delivery truck similar to what's shown for the fire truck on that plan. That's drawing C-108.
And we, we have to discuss whether the trash is moving or, or can be eliminated if there's a combined big city collection. I don't know if the town is, who would make that decision in the town? Would that be town board or, or planning board? Okay. All right. Where is the trash in the city side, Lou? Is it towards the town line or is it on the, all the way on the other end?
Lou, you're muted.
You're muted, Lou.
I'm sorry. You're still muted, Lou. I can't hear you.
Doesn't take much to shut me up on this meeting. Okay. It's, I think it's, it's midway, it's, it's more centrally located near the eastern border, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
But as I mentioned, we, our staff takes care of that. So they should where it's located for help. So, but I, I can, I can let you know that. And like I said, if you will allow us, that would be great.
If it was all the way in the south.
Understanding that, you know, if we had to put it there, we would. But it would add up, it would probably add a couple more parking spaces at this point. So that would probably be something you would prefer. But, you know, I will leave that. I'll give you more information on that. I know we can move, if you want us to keep it on the town side, we can move it to the northeast corner.
And there's sufficient capacity on the city, the refuse enclosure that is on the city property now to handle the three extra buildings?
I, I believe so, but I will answer that. I will, I will respond to that.
Yeah, if there's capacity there, I, I think that'd be fine. But otherwise, moving it to the northeast corner is the other option. But we'll go around the board and see what people say.
So as to Mr. Petruero's comments, the first comment, you know, that intersection, which I was confused that was ever included. Phil Greeley was our traffic consultant. And he, and you know, that, that intersection is not only on the other side of Nine, it's almost a mile and a half, if not more, about a mile and a half away. And since our, you know, since that was, that traffic review, at least three developments have been put, placed between us and that intersection. The Vassar, I'm sorry, the, the college expansion, the Hudson Heritage has a, a traffic study and Fox Run. And I'm not sure, I think that Phil Greeley was a consultant on at least two, maybe all three. And I've spoken to Phil and he has asked me if he, and, and what he, you know, the comments he made for us was that signalization needed to be looked at and striping on the, on the pavement. While I've been up there, I, I can't speak to signalization as solely within the town's purview, the, the stripings are there. And I think in this last Hudson Heritage review, he didn't even address that intersection because it doesn't seem to be an issue for him. However, he asked me and I told him, you know, he asked if he can speak directly with Mark and maybe put that to rest. So hopefully what Mark hears from Phil will, you know, they speak the same language. So maybe he was satisfied by the historic nature of that. Comments two and three will be addressed by our engineer.
Yep, sounds good.
Lou, just to respond, so I wasn't necessarily seeking for you to do the improvements there. I know from the, based on the prior project assessment, I just wanted to know what they were, if it involved like a restriping of a left turn lane or something like that. So again, speaking with Phil was fine with me. I'm open to that. I just wanted to know what those improvements were that were considered, not necessarily that you would implement them, it was just what they would be that might be needed there.
Yeah, I don't know if they were more specific than, you know, check on the signalization and striping of the intersection. I don't know that they mentioned specifically turn lanes or anything like that. And I believe, and I've been out there and there's the striping at the intersection, you know, stop lines and things like that. But let's, you know, let's see if you and Phil can connect because I.
Have those guys talk together.
Hudson Heritage is on your website, so I looked at that, it wasn't even addressed. So apparently somebody was happy with it. But I, you know, maybe in Fox Run or.
Yeah, Lou, so we'll, we'll get Mark in touch with Phil. That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Help cover it. And so I think all these have gone around. This is a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone on the meeting tonight which to comment on this project?
You can raise your hand in Zoom or if that doesn't work for you, just unmute yourself. Also, if you're on the phone, star six to unmute.
Keep in mind, you can always submit comments in writing as well.
Not seeing any raised hands and don't see anyone frantically waving at the screen.
When's the submission from our first come up? All right, seeing that, I move we adjourn the public hearing to April 15, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, we'll go around the board for additional comments. We've covered a lot already. Start with Joan this time.
I don't really have any comments. I agree generally with the proposal for the trash. But for the applicant, are you saying that if the city ends up being the, the collection, somebody like your employees would go and physically get the trash from each building and then bring it to the, like, how does that work?
We have a, if I'm not mistaken, in the operations, we have, you know, garbage receptacle within the buildings.
Oh, okay, so they were going empty.
Down into a garbage room and then our staff takes it out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, Rocco?
Okay, yeah. I think the one thing that I brought up last time that still kind of concerns me a little bit, I know Kristin has it clearly defined in here, and that's the whole snow storage and the walkway there, the, the park. And the previous plan, I saw some landscape and that was more detailed. This time I didn't see much. I don't know what size the shrubs are, et cetera. And then i- if that's used for snow storage, you're going to dump the snow right on those shrubs and what, what would that do to that? Also, you know, the maintenance, I know, I know you're going to work out a, it's an agreement for what the Christians stated in there, but will that be, you know, I want to make sure that that gets kept open even when it snows, that the sidewalks are cleared, et cetera, so people can use that whole greenway there. But on a more positive note, I have been in those apartments on the city side. I have friends who live there and they're, they're quite nice. And I think that this would be a wonderful addition. We just have to make sure we get it right. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Rocco. Any comments from Ahmed?
I think you want to ask my question. So for next time, really, I would like to hear a little bit more about the garbage collection. As it's not clear how is it going to be really managed, whether the city would accept the additional refuse or not?
It's a private collector.
Is it, okay. So it's, it's not city collection?
No.
Okay, so that, that helps with that. That's a good question, yeah.
So we'll need all that documented, obviously, if that's going to be a viable alternative. So just, you know, please do that, Lou.
Yeah, if that.
Okay.
And yet make sure that has sufficient capacity and then we can decide whether to eliminate it completely here or move it to the northeast coast, northeast corner. All right, I'll move on to Nicole.
I have a couple of questions. I'm not, I'm not really sure if I asked these last time or not, but are you adding lighting to the riverfront area?
There is lighting in the riverfront area already. It's a solar, there's solar lighting there.
Okay, so you're not adding anything?
Not adding.
Okay. Also, do you have any type of signage planned?
We have signage planned for the buildings and the streets, and it was part of the package we provided. There were details, pictures of the signage and, you know, obviously matching the signage that was on the existing structures in the city side. So it's in the package. There was several attachments. I think this was called site details or something along that line.
Yeah, so I can actually point you right to that. It's in the project assessment submittal package, probably about halfway, two thirds of the way through the package. A point of clarification, and it's a great question and point, Nicole, we do want to see those details pulled out and put into the actual architectural drawings themselves. So it was wonderful that you included that as part of the project assessment detail package, but we do actually need to see those formalized on, on the plan set.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Seems like we're making a lot of progress on the issues tonight by discussing. Let's go to Ben for comments.
I'm not clear on this. There will, there will be recreation fees.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. That was a town board requirement that.
Okay.
In their agreement to rezone.
And since garbage is the primary issue tonight.
Right, we understand there'll be rec fees. We are, I, I've done a calculation, we're requesting some credit for the open public park, which, you know, because the rec fees are in lieu of dedication of a space. So we are dedicating already an eight tenths of an acre. So, and based upon the calculations in your ordinances about how, what size it should be and what's the cost of the rec fees, the, the cost of the rec fees are based on bedrooms, the cost, the, the size of the open space is based on unit count. I've done all those calculations. I can give, you know, I, I can show that to somebody so that we are, I don't know if that is appropriate for Lisa or someone, you know, whatever, but I.
Handle that with the staff.
And there'll be rec fees.
Yep, send that to Kristin.
Kristin, okay, yeah, can coordinate that.
Okay.
Not enough, no, I'm just kidding.
All right.
Since garbage seems to be the primary issue tonight, you said it was a private collector. Is it the same collector for the city and the town or is this going to create garbage much?
We contract, we're going to give the same guy.
Okay, I won't want to find.
We're not looking to complicate garbage.
I won't want to find anybody in a dumpster.
Well, I can't guarantee that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
You know, Uber Eats does deliver. I don't know how much if they, they give too much food, what happens, but.
All right, Peter, do you have comments?
I just have two comments. The question of the Transportation Corporation has been out there for a long time. I'm glad to hear that Mr. Kaufman has made a firm commitment to resolve that issue. I also have to say that I, I'm, I support Liz's idea of having the COC citations noted on the site plan. And that's, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Peter.
Just to your point, I've been asking about that Transportation Corp. for about four months, five months maybe. So I'm glad, but this was the first time that we had a comment that it looks like we'll need it. And now I can, you know, deal with it. I didn't know I, whether that was going to be, whether we needed it or not. Now it appears that they think we do. Fine, let's, I'll talk about it and we'll deal with it.
Mr. Kaufman, if anybody can get it done, it's you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. You know, well, we'll deal with that. Let me, Lisa, are you the one I should talk to about this or is that also something you and Jim need to address?
You're talking about the Transportation Corporation?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's Jim. I've, we'll, we'll reach out to you collectively and try and set up a time where we can talk and we'll see who else needs to be involved in it.
Right, actually, you've had so many comments in between, I forgot your first mention.
Also, I, I need to understand who's going to own the riverfront park.
Say what?
The riverfront park.
Riverfront Park will be dedicated to the city, who will agree to maintain it. Until then, it's on us.
Is there a document that shows that?
We've had made an offer of session. The offer of session actually mentions that if the town wanted to take ownership, they could, that alternative. I think I've got the answer to that. So we are going to deal with that. And yeah, the city has agreed to take it. In fact, they sent a letter to the town board when they were considering the change of zone, saying that they would in fact take the park.
Was the offer of session filed with the Dutch Scanning Clerk?
I do not believe so. It might have been, I don't know, I don't think so.
This is something we have to sort of just tie up. You know, you did send that letter to the town board, Lou, and back last year. But, you know, what we need to know now is when is that happening? How is that happening? We're also going to be talking to the city, actually, the attorney's there tomorrow. So we'll, we'll, one way or another, we're going to figure out exactly how this is getting done and we'll make sure everyone knows what that answer is.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone. My, I mean, my two cents, we talked about a lot of stuff. I want to just reiterate the path that Mark had mentioned, you know, there's a path sketched out to the riverfront there, but you make sure you have the gate to that path in the right place with a crosswalk to.
I did not understand you. Could you say that again?
The path that goes out to the river and it's kind of in front, on the left side of the commercial building, make sure there's a crosswalk markings to it, that it comes out, that it comes out in the right place.
That's going to be on the plans. Absolutely, that's going to be on the plans.
Mark referred to that.
It'll, you know, and, and if I understand it, well, we'll just, you'll see it on the plan.
Yep. And we've discussed everything else I've said. I think the only other issue I would mention, the county weighed in on the commercial building, have another couple of windows on the east side there, if that can be done to make it. We try not to have any windowless facades on, or anything facing. So take a look at that. And that's my two cents. And I think we've gotten a lot further with the discussions tonight, so that's great. I think we're ready for final motion tonight.
I move to the planning board for further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following one through 12.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks, everyone, and good luck. And we'll get that meeting set up to discuss the Transportation Corp. and other issues.
Thank you, everyone.
Things ironed out.
Thank you.
Think we're near, near the end here. Next stop, Hudson Heritage North Entrance, amended site plan. I see David out there. Who's? Yep, David's there. And I see Marty, okay. I can't hear you, Marty, yet. You don't have any sound on. Marty, are you there? Who's presenting for Hudson Heritage North Entrance?
Good evening, Kyle, Kyle Hearn with Chase &amp; Companies. I can start things off while Marty's trying to connect his audio.
Thanks, Kyle.
So good evening, everyone. So, good evening, everyone. We submitted this to the board last month. The long and short of it is, you guys are familiar with this project. The northern entrance to the site will be Hudson Heritage Drive. That entrance is proposed, proposed to have two retaining walls on each side of that entrance, and I have a rendering here, let me share my screen.
Kyle, can you hear me all right?
And there's Marty. So that was my big presentation, thank you all.
Go ahead, go ahead, Kyle, you're doing fantastic. You're on a roll, Kyle, either way.
All right, so let me screen one, there we go. All right, can everyone see that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Oh. Not there. There we go.
Okay, so that is a rendering of what was proposed. It's essentially a block, manufactured block wall that has a fence on top of it for fall prevention. The, you know, it, it has the benefit that it decreases the amount of disturbance on each side of, of the entrance. However, as you can see, it really has a tunneling effect on that entrance. I can't really see much beyond, and it's, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing, even though as far as retaining walls go, you know, we tried to, you know, present something that, that, that was nice looking for a retaining wall. However, you know, in comparison to a more, you know, open and natural grading plan, this is what we're proposing now.
Can you take her out anyway real quick on the side? Yeah, but.
Nicole, we need to, there we go. Sorry about that. Nicole, you need to mute when you're next.
So what we have now is removing the retaining walls and just grading out at three to one on each side of the wall. As you can see, and I'll, we'll get into the, the disturbance aspect of it in a minute, but as you can see, you know, it's, it's a much better experience if you're either driving or walking along the sidewalks. You immediately, as you enter the site here, you're gonna see the main admin building on top of the hill, and it's just gonna have a much better entrance to the site. So we submitted, with these renderings, we submitted some amended site plans that show, this is actually the approved plans, so I'll start there. So back in 2020, when the development was approved, this here is, is what was approved. So you'll see the retaining walls along both sides of the road, and you see the grading, you know, on each, on each side at the top of the wall, there's a drainage swale to keep, to keep stormwater away from the top of the wall, and there's some additional grading beyond that. But the amendment is here. So you see the retaining walls are gone, we're still proposing the drainage soils to, so that it's not draining down directly into the roadway. And you'll see, you see that the grading has been expanded. The retaining walls were previously 10 feet in height, so at three to one grade, it's approximately 30 feet additional grading into what is the great lawn. So, you know, it, it equates to .49 acres, but when you consider, and this is only a portion of the great lawn, when you consider how large the great lawn actually is, I think it's, it's not as big an impact as, as you might imagine when you hear .49 acres. There is also some questions about, you know, whether that has any effect on the usability of the great lawn, there's some questions about whether the paths that were conceptually proposed, whether they were impacted based on where the revision quad was. You can see here, those paths, and these paths aren't final, the great lawn is going to be restored with the phase two of the project. This is a site plan amendment to phase one. But nevertheless, the path is actually not impacted.
Yep.
But ultimately, you can see there are some areas in the existing great lawn that have even steeper slopes than the three to one. So we don't think it's out of character for the great lawn, we don't think it makes it any less usable, if anything, it actually makes it more usable, in my opinion. It, it removes a big barrier from the entrance of the site and the sidewalk along there to the great lawn, they're more connected now. It removes the liability from the town standpoint with the retaining wall, even with the fence, there's, there's still that, you know, attractive nuisance that somebody might, you know, go up behind that wall and somehow fall down. So, you know, we, we think this is a better option, and we're interested to see what the town thinks.
Kyle, if I may, thank you. I'd like to just add a couple of points. Can you please pull up the rendering of the, the site before and after the proposed? Yeah, so it's Marty Berger at EFG Saber Heritage LLC, thank you for taking the time. Frankly, I think that we all made a mistake in, in approving what this has shown, and I, and I take the majority of the blame, because I didn't quite realize that this was the case, it slipped me, it might have slipped you as well. It certainly isn't a very attractive entrance, and more importantly, after spending three and a half, four million dollars in beautifying the exterior of the administration building, this entrance prevents what is intended, which is, if you scroll down below, Kyle, which is the ability to continue to see the administration building as proposed. So I, when I identified this, I spoke with Andy Lern and, and our team, and I also spoke with Yvonne from the Historical Society, and we all agreed that we should attend to it. Kyle and his team and our architects prepared the grading plan. The net, net of it is, is that for a minor intrusion into the great lawn, that does not undermine the intent of the great lawn or impact any of the paths, et cetera, we could do the right thing, which is to have a magnificent entrance that's open, that's not a tunnel that sees the administration building from beyond. I have received positive support to proceed this way from the Historical, Historical Society, and I also have received the, the, the agreement with Andy Lern and his group that this is the way to go, and I've read all of the comments that have been received. We don't have any problem in satisfying any of the conditions and would respectfully request that if the planning board approved this condition upon us satisfying these conditions, we would work over the next 30, 60 days, we'll meet all of the conditions, and then make the, build the entrance as soon as, as possible. In, in regard to a couple of specific comments, or pardon me, questions, I'd like to just address them. CPL asked a question to confirm if riprap outlet protection will be provided for the flared ends sections into the dry pond. This is beyond my expertise, but the answer is yes, all flared end sections proposed throughout the site are to receive riprap. There was a question by AKRF as to whether or not DOT needed to be apprised of this. We reviewed this with, with Mazur, and of course, if AKRF disagrees, they can discuss it with Mazur, or they, or we can notify DOT. But Mazur's, the traffic consultant's position is that, that not only will this improve sightlines and eliminate the walls, but it doesn't affect the DOT right of way at all, they wouldn't be involved, the drainage and detention on-site are unchanged, so there is no change impacted a DOT drainage, which would be their only reason for involvement. So I don't see anything in the comments that we can't address over the next 30 or 60 days. Lastly, the Historic Society had two comments, other than their positive recommendation to proceed with this change. The first was the request for us to have some expert assist us in the great lawn, which we are amenable to do. We previously have filed with the state of New York a grant application after identifying a suitable expert on the Vox Olmsted lawn. We did not receive the grant, but we will proceed to engage them as part of our professional team when it's time to work on the restoration of the grand, the great lawn. And the second of their request had nothing to do with this, but they requested that we preserve some of the older, more mature trees that are in the north. And, you know, I, I, for one, have been an advocate of keeping the trees, and I've been assisting that we keep these beautiful trees. I believe what Yvonne is talking about in particular is, as you head north in front of the administration building, and then make the first right turn heading east, there are some magnificent trees that, that should be protected, and we're absolutely gonna protect those trees, they're just beautiful. So with that said, I'm happy to answer questions as Kyle is, and we would respectfully request that the planning board provide their conditional approval, and over the next 30, 60 days, we will address all of the comments, and, and once Eric and Mike tell us we're good to go, we will put the shovel on the ground and make the north entrance reflect what we're seeing here on, on the regrading entry. All right, thanks, Marty and Kyle. Let's go to Eric to start with, or do you have any comments here, or should I go to Liz?
Sure. Okay. Yeah, just in terms of overview, the board, as it mentions, the, the board did an amended approval in 2020. This was enough of a substantial change that it warranted reconsideration of the actions by the board at that time, namely the SECA review, and the consistency with the SECA review, and with the modified development master plan. So far, it appears reviewers have concluded that it is consistent with them, but I'll, you can refer to those consultants and the reviews there. The, our only thought was that the sightline, it, we agreed that it provides a much better introduction to the project. We did suggest that the comments include just placing the location of that sightline on the map correspondingly. The preservation commission did provide some comments, Marty alluded to some of them. You have those in your packet, they did include the, the preserve, you know, requests for landscape architecture assistance and tree preservation, so we'll look for Marty's response subsequently. They did also, they did also raise another question, which might be relevant at this time, which is what will happen, they asked what would happen to the brick entry posts off Route 9, because those are a part of this site plan. That would be a question worth following up on at this meeting.
I'd like you to address that now, Eric, or later?
Sure, well, you, you could address it now, and then we can, we'll know.
I, I think the two posts that are there are pretty, in extremely poor condition, and those, the entrance relocates to the north. If you remember, we actually closed the entrance that's there now where those two piles, two monuments are, and then we relocated to align with the park. And by the way, I just heard today that the park is undertaking about a million dollar upgrade of that park in anticipation of connecting through the new intersection with a walkway up Hudson Heritage Drive, which is great news. Bottom line is, is that those posts will, aren't worth saving. If we're required to replace them on our site, which I'm not for sure, then we will. We preserved a lot of brick from the administration building, which as you know, we're building the two pylons with, but we're happy to duplicate those posts. I think they're beautiful, and, but we need to put them at the new entrance.
Okay. So, yeah, what the, maybe that, the board could take that into consideration. The commission did ask that, they recognized the report condition and suggested that they be involved in any discussion of salvage and reuse on the site. Last, the only, before I turn to Liz, the only, and other consultants, we did refer the submittal to the DOT, we have not received any comments back, and we did receive comments from the Dutchess County Department of Planning. I believe they found that it was a matter of local concern. So with that, I'll let Liz and the engineer pick up on their comments.
Thanks, Eric. Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, so I'm sorry if I was looking like a bubblehead planner there for a while, but this, this really is a great change, but of course, we went through the deliberation of looking back at, you know, the overall master plan, development, modified development master plan, and the most current findings, and then comparing side by side with the most current signed amended site plan set. So my comments are very few and inconsequential, having to do with line of site profiles and, you know, a few clarifications about the effect on the great lawn. So I look forward to reviewing your next submittal.
Thanks, Liz. Yeah, I agree, this is a great improvement. I remember we tried to discuss, we thought the retaining wall was necessary, discussed what, you know, what type of material and all that to use, but this is a great improvement. Let's go out to Don. Obviously, there's changes to some water flow and whatnot, what say you?
Our comments are mostly pretty technical at this point, and there aren't many of them. I think they'll be easily resolved.
Okay, great. Yeah, let's see, is this on for, this on for public hearing, so I move we open to public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Is there anyone in the meeting tonight wish to comment on this application? Again, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or just unmute yourself on the screen there, if you're on the phone, star six to unmute. Not seeing any? Wouldn't expect too much right now. Just make sure we get. Give them a minute? A minute to chime in if anyone has comments. Going once, going twice, sold. I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Go around the board for additional comments, Peter?
It's a big improvement.
Yep. Ben?
Thank you, Peter.
Ben?
I like it.
Nicole?
Looks good.
Rocco?
Yep, looks great.
Joan?
Yep, I think it's, it looks great, I love the improvement.
And Ahmed?
Astonishing.
Sounds great, and I'll echo everybody else's comments, that's, as I said, that we had hoped to see this originally, but then, you know, we thought the topography of moving the entrance didn't allow.
Thank you, I think we, I think we, we, we uncast a wrong, so I appreciate you agreeing that we shouldn't build this, this wall.
Yeah, I mean, remember we talked.
Get rid of the walls.
We talked about the wall material and such, because we weren't sure how it was gonna look, and, but getting rid of it, I know the topography changes because of moving the entrance, but being able to, to even that out with a little more work is great. And I think we will add into those, since you want to do that, the, I'd like to see the, the consultant be hired for the landscape, as well as try to use, or try to, I guess, if we duplicate those, the entrance post at the entrance there, how does, does that conflict with the, the other sign, pylon sign that we're?
I don't think that they're close, I don't think it's a problem, we'll, we'll make it happen, the posts are really interesting, they reflect the, you know, they've been there for a long time, I think that it would be nice to honor the heritage of the project by restoring or rebuilding them or duplicating them.
Yep, so I'd, I'd like to.
We'll find a, I'll work with Yvonne, we'll find a suitable place, but I don't think that they conflict at all with the pylon location.
Great, I, I'll, we'll add that as a condition as well, Ben. And I appreciate you continuing to work with Yvonne through this whole process, that, because it's such a historic site.
Great, it's been, it's been a joy.
All right, we're ready for motion, Nicole, if you wish.
I move that the planning board hereby makes determinations of consistency with SECA findings and conformance with the modified development master plan and grants conditional amended site plan approval for the Hudson Heritage North Entrance amended site plan for Phase 1. Would you like me to read everything?
It says as follows, A through-
Yeah, okay. As follows, A, the amended project assessment provided by EAF Sabre Heritage demonstrates that the amended site plan would continue to comply with the standards of the site plan approval as more particularly set forth in the planning board's original site plan approval resolution of June 4, 2019. B, the amended site plan does not propose project changes which may result in any significant adverse environmental impacts not previously identified and addressed in the planning board's SECA findings of June 14, 2019. C, the proposed modifications to the north entrance would not impair the mitigation measures incorporated into the project as a result of the previous SECA review process before the town board and planning board and accordingly would not result in any significant adverse impact warranting additional assessment through the preparation of a supplemental environmental impact statement. D, the project as proposed in the amended site plan would, would remain consistent with and in substantial conformance with the modified DMP approved by the planning board on June 14, 2019. E, the project as proposed would remain consistent with and in substantial conformance with the approval resolution of the amended site plan adopted by the planning board on April 16, 2020 and the proposed project amendments would not require modifying the April 16, 2020 findings and conditions of approval. Therefore, said April 16, 2020 findings and conditions of approval are hereby incorporated by reference into the proposed project findings and conditions and approval. And in the accordance with the foregoing, the plan board grants amended site plan approval for the project conditioned upon and subject to the following terms and conditions. I, I'm sorry, one, acceptance as adequate and complete by the planning board, planning department of the applicant's responses to those comments and of the planning board, town departments, planning board consultants and other agencies that the planning department determines are required to be satisfied prior to the signing of the site plan by the chair, including but not limited to the following 1 through 14.
And then?
14.4.
And, and two, yep, two through four. All right, and I would add on to that, the kitchen dishes we discussed, to hire landscape consultants, keep the old trees where possible and, and create, and recreate those exist, the existing gate posts at the entrance.
Sure, thank you. Second?
Moved and seconded.
Carl, just to point a clarification, the references to the date in June of 2019 should all be June 4, 2019. There was one to June 14, that was a typo.
All right, we'll make that, all June 4, okay.
That was in D.
Okay, that amends, amends the motion and then, does the motion have a second again?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero. Well, thanks Marty.
Well, thank you very much. And just by means of update, we're planning on opening Phase 1, including the shop right on May 15, so we'll see you there.
Shop right looked like it was moving along pretty well last I was up there.
Good. Thank you everyone, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks Marty.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks Carl.
Good night everybody. Don't stay up too late.
Thanks Liz.
Good night Liz.
Yep, watch out for the snow on your way home to anybody who's traveling.
Well, they're not, they're all home.
They're all home. It's just us, okay. All right, next stop is Ferrari &amp; Sons office at 195 Van Wagner Road. Who's here representing that project?
Good evening Chairman, Jay Deising, Mori Architects.
Hi Jay.
So good evening board and everyone. I'm working with Ferrari &amp; Sons who are general contractors in, based in the town of Poughkeepsie. They currently have a building on Over rocker Road and it's been sold, so they're moving to their new location, which is 195 Van Wagner. And I'm just going to share some plans here. So the site's located directly across from the Tucker Drive intersection with Van Wagner Road and you can see in proximity there, the town court is in the area and then Stop and Shop, which is down on Burnett Boulevard. The existing site is about a half acre in size and there's an existing building of about 2,100 square feet that's there. There's a shop on one end of the building with overhead doors and then on the west end of the building is office space and, which was, the building was actually previously occupied by another contractor. And then the rest of the site right now is, is just existing kind of gravel parking and yard. So our proposed project includes constructing a small addition on the front of the building. Ferrari will use the building, very similar to the previous occupants being, they were both contractors, so the shop on the, on the east end of the building will stay and then the Ferrari offices will be on the left side or the, the west end of the building. We're going to pave the existing gravel parking area in the front of the building, so we'll have space for about 10 cars. And then we're going to construct a black chain link fence across from the corner of the building to separate the parking area in the front with the, or from the backyard of the building, which will be some storage for different materials and equipment that Ferrari uses in his contracting business. We're proposing to construct a shed roof across the back of the building, just 12 foot deep. It's an open structure just to give some weather protection to different materials that he might have stored back there at any given time. And you can see the floor plan of the building with the, the bays or the shop on the right side and then our office on the left side with the 240 square foot addition that we're proposing in the front. And here you can see that dotted line represents the shed roof structure that'll be in the back, the rear of the building.
Yep.
So it's the existing facade of the building. It's a flat roof, one story building. And then there is a small entrance structure on the left side that we're going to replace with our proposed addition. And here you can see the, the proposed architecture for the building. The, the new addition will be a reverse gable structure. And then we're also going to construct a mansard across the front of the building, a pitched roof to help conceal that flat roof that's in the back. We're going to add some, some field stone veneer at the base of the building up to underside of the windows and then the, the rest of the building will be covered with cement board or hardy pine siding. The gable roof structure is going to have a asphalt shingle finish on it and then the, the mansard is going to have a spanning seam metal finish. And there are some color samples here that you can see for all the different materials, just a variety of gray tones that'll be on the building. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that the site is located in the vicinity of some Blandings Turtles habitat and Aspen Environmental has reviewed the project and determined that it's unlikely to cause any disturbance to the habitat. This is based on the distance between our site and where the habitat is located. It's a pretty good distance. And then the different topography and, and site features surrounding the area that makes it unlikely for any interactions with any turtles. But in order to follow DEC recommendations, Aspen suggested that we hold a pre-construction meeting with them on the site before we get started, which we're certainly open to doing and look forward to working with them on that. So that's basically a summary of our project for you tonight. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to review it with you and look forward to any questions. Thank you.
All right, looks good. Thanks Jay. Go to Kristen for department's recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you Jay for a very thorough and comprehensive project review that helps me out. The project is on for a public hearing, SECA review, site plan review and architectural review. I will note that for SECA purposes, this is a Type 2 action and Jay has already described, you know, the plan going forward regarding the Blandings Turtles. We do have that documentation as part of the record and for the board's review. And I have prepared a recommendation that could go either way, whether the board chooses to open, close the public hearing and adopt a SECA resolution and a conditional site plan approval and then go on to conduct architectural review or the board, if they chose for whatever reason, to open and adjourn the hearing, they could and defer action. But staff would recommend at this point that they would be comfortable handling any outstanding comments. I think there are two items I would like to note, just as a matter of record, two for the board's benefit. One is that we did receive Dutchess County planning comments, or lack thereof, I should say. It's a matter of local concern. There were no comments submitted that came in just about 4:30 today and has been distributed to the board by email, but is a part of the project record. And secondly, the zoning department did flag a couple of variances, area variances that would be required necessitated by the existing site and being, and it just the nature of it being located within a IH zoning district. But for the purposes of our staff review, though, the board may have alternate viewpoints of this, we do think that it is a good use of the site. You are reusing the site and cleaning it up and that in most cases, we try not to pinpoint one port against the other in terms of a decision, but we would recommend a conditional approval. That said, the applicant is taking a bit of a risk because they still would have to go to the ZBA to seek those area variances. You know, I, that's all I'm going to say about it. Lisa may have more, our counsel, but otherwise, that's it.
Bless you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Kristen. Did you have any comment on that Lisa? As far as making conditional on the ZBA?
There, there's no hard and fast rule. As a general rule, we typically prefer to get the variances first, but before granting conditional, but in this instance, given the nature of the variances in that they're not really going any closer to the property line in the, to the side and in the back, it's strictly to add a roof. I don't see, you know, without prejudging anything for the ZBA, I don't think it's anything that they would necessarily be concerned with. And if those variances were to be denied, it would be a simple amendment to the site plan. So, I mean, it's really almost up to the applicant at this point. It's, you know, looking for two additions to the structure, but it really doesn't change the use much. So it really isn't, this one in my opinion is board discretion.
Seems fairly straightforward, rather not have them come back if we don't need to, but we'll go around the board for comments. Anything from you Don on drainage or?
No, no, we're pretty good. We just have some, some minor comments they need to take care of.
I will notice there was a comment from the county DPW, DPW that makes sure the entrance meets the requirements.
Yes, we did also, thank you Carl, we did also receive comments from the DPW just this afternoon. Jay, I'm not sure if you were in, you've received those yet, but I'm assuming you would be working with their office.
Yeah, we did, we did receive that email this afternoon and, you know, we certainly will reach out to them.
Okay, great.
Jay, would you mind unsharing your screen for the moment?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll go-
Well, you want to do the public hearing?
Public hearing for this. So I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Does anyone on the meeting tonight wish to comment on this application?
As we've said before, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom or just unmute yourself and let us know. Star six if you're on the phone to unmute.
Looks like we're not hearing from anyone. Scrolling through quick.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
All right.
Yep.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Nope, motion passes, seven to zero. All right, go around the board for comments. Start with Nicole this time.
Did you have a lighting plan for this?
We don't right now Nicole, we're, we're working on that and I know that was a comment that was shared, so we're going to, we hope to work just directly with Chris, or with staff on that to wrap up, but there, there will be some minor lighting just to look, to light the parking area and the yard.
Okay, yeah, I like this project. You know, you're reusing a building and we're always looking for that, so it looks good.
Thank you.
Ben?
I think it's a welcome improvement.
Sounds good. Peter?
Ferrari &amp; Sons is a long established town business with a reputation for very high quality work. Whatever they do with this building will be a big improvement.
Yeah, the renderings look good already.
Thanks Peter.
Rocco?
Just two quick things. Any HVAC going on top of the roof?
No, it'll be inside.
Oh, okay, everything will be inside. Okay, that's great. Secondly, you said that the, the back area and the side area and be, behind the fence and will be used for storage. No heavy equipment, no nothing is planned to go in there because I noticed the fence at the gate is approximately 12 feet wide.
We're going to, it's wide enough to allow a pickup truck to go in the back and, or is, with work vehicles to go in the back and load and unload. And then we're going to have our refuse, our refuse, our dumpster back there, so that truck needs to get back to empty and, and back, back out.
Okay, but no other heavy equipment, tractors, whatever?
He may have tractors, small, a small backhoe, not, nothing really heavy equipment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks Rocco. Joan?
I think it looks great. It's a really nice reuse of the property and I'm comfortable with a conditional approval tonight.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Ahmed?
I have much to add other than it is great to see a renovation happening in the town.
Yep, and I'll echo those comments as well. And I think we're ready for motions. You got?
You're muted.
Muted there.
Sorry. I move the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for a SECA Type 2 action pursuant to SECA Part 617.5C9 requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
Moved and seconded for SECA. Call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Ferrari &amp; Sons office, 195 Van Wagner Road, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following 1 through 12.
Does that include the ZBA comments?
Oh.
Okay. Go ahead, I heard a second, okay.
Yeah, second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero. All right, and architectural review, we, you did show that to us before. Does anyone have comments on the architecture, the mansard roof and additional stonework on the bottom? Any board members? I thought it looked good myself. Any modifications or changes you, anyone would recommend? Seeing none, I move we accept the architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes, seven to zero. All right, good luck Jay and- All right, good luck, Jay, and.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
As everyone says, good to see you reuse the building and improve.
Thank you.
Next up is Department of Corrections and Community Supervision Site Plan Hearing at 20 Manchester Road. Who's on to represent Department of Corrections tonight?
Good evening, sorry about that, I was muted. Name is Michael Verton, the architect for the applicant.
All right, Michael.
So what we have is, I'm sure everybody's familiar with 20 Manchester, and over 20 years ago, it used to be the former IGA, excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry about that, supermarket.
Yep.
And the Department of Corrections has been occupying the north side of the building for a number of years, and they're looking to flip over to the other side. My apology, my voice is going tonight. So they, currently they're at 8,000 square feet of the building, and they're looking to take over almost 12,000, which would be on the, the other side of the building. Now that the side that they vacate will be left open for a future tenant.
All right.
No tenant has been, has been signed up yet for there. Forgive me, I'm sorry about my voice tonight.
Yeah, that's all right.
So on the site, there are, the, as for the building on the exterior, there are very few changes being planned. One change is on the eastern side of it, we will be putting a walkway, which will serve as an entrance to a number of doors. A secure parking area is required, which they currently do not have, but they need it, in case a parolee fails a meeting for them to take him back. So that will be added also against the building.
Okay.
We will be redoing the parking with slightly adding landscaping and, and just cleaning the site up in general.
Right, trying to remember if there's a fence between those two, between you and the gas station, and do you know if there is, if who owns it? I think there was something in disrepair there last night.
I'll have to find out about that, I'm not sure.
Okay, just something to look into.
There is a fence, it's an anchor fence.
All right, I don't know who owns that, and it might need to be, be some cleanup there. All right, let's move on to Eric for his comments.
There we go. Yep, let's see. This is, it's a good preliminary plan submittal. It's a, it does, it beats the criteria for type two action, so that no environmental review is required. It is a proposal for the change, apparently the use on record of the building department is as a, is as a supermarket, which it once was, so it's a change of use to offices. And the, the plan, overall, it's, it's going in the right direction. We have a bunch of comments seeking some more information, as does the engineering department. The, I guess the one issue we might highlight for board discussion perhaps, is the site's pretty wide open, and there's a lot of asphalt there, and the ATC regulations do call for landscaping and buffering along the frontage, and to keep parking out of the, the frontyard in particular. So we're recommending that that, the board consider that as a condition for moving forward, in addition to providing complete information. So that we have comments to collect more information, discuss the application, and to defer.
All right, thanks, Eric. Anything from engineering on this one, Don?
We've asked for quite a few more details, but nothing of any great consequence.
All right, yeah, it's already, already paved and everything, so if anything, we'll be eliminating some pavement. All right, it's time for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone on the meeting tonight wish to comment on this application? Raise your hand in the Zoom.
Yeah, I see somebody physically raising their hand, that's.
Patricia.
Patricia, yeah, go ahead, unmute yourself.
Unmute yourself and, and make your comments. There you go.
Hi. We are Keaton Patricia Longguard, and we live at 10 Fairmont Avenue, and we've boarded the property in question. One of my questions was already answered by Mr. Berta. We were wondering why, after them operating there for quite a while, there was a need for a, a secured parking area. We also have concerns about, you're increasing their footprint in the building by, I think, almost 30%. With that, are they increasing staff, and are they increasing services and programs, and consequently increasing the clients, the amount of clients who are in and out of the building as well? We have never had a problem until now, not, not that it's a problem yet, but, you know, our concern is we have two young grandchildren that, we babysit four or three days, we, we have them here at our home. We utilize our backyard a lot because on Fairmont Avenue, you really can't play in the front, and I wouldn't want to see my grandchildren exposed to, you know, maybe a van coming in that is, got armed guards in it. We were just concerned about the increase in, in services and client base and whether, you know, we have a few other questions too. Wanted to know if the entire property was going to be fenced, and whether or not there were going to be security cameras.
May I, may I respond?
Yep, yeah, some good concerns, so.
The, the amount of services and programs will not be increased, it'll be the same, same programs. What it is, is that they're, they're needing to increase the size because they're, for what they are offering right now, they don't have adequate facilities. Staff, I'm not sure if the staff will be increased or not, I don't have an answer to that, I'm sorry. As for armed guards and armed vans coming in and out of that, that usually, it usually does not happen. If a parolee does come in and fail a drug test, or is violated for any reason, they put them in, there's a one holding cell inside, they put them in there, and they wait for a sheriff deputy to come, pick them up, and take them to the county jail. That's the reason for the secured parking. As for security cameras, the answer is yes. There are, currently are security cameras now, and there will be security cameras when there, actually, there will be more when this is over. As for fencing the property, there is no plan on fencing the property, other than the fencing that's up now. Landscaping will be increased to help with that, and I believe we're actually flipping them from your side to the other side.
Yes.
So that should take them further away from you.
Yes, yes, we saw that on the plans.
And I'm, I'm sure you've noticed, in the past, there have been client help, standing outside waiting for their turn to come in. One of the things that we're doing is increasing the size of the waiting area, so that won't be an issue anymore. They'll all be waiting inside.
Okay.
So one of the, they're trying to adapt, because the facility now is over 20 years old, and they didn't have the walls that they had now.
Okay, all right. And if at a later date, okay, the Department of Corrections wanted to become the tenant, okay, and wanted to expand to become the tenant in the property that they are vacating, the portion of the building that they are vacating, there's nothing stopping them, correct?
That is correct, because once the building is changed, it's, it can be any tenant, office tenant. But we will need, we will need to come back in front of the board again if that happens.
I'm glad you explained some of those answers, that you moved to the other side of the building, and as well as, as well as the line, you know, no waiting outside, et cetera. There are some current cameras. All right, is there, is there anyone else? Somebody?
I believe.
Ahmed, I believe you're.
I'm going to need to go unmute.
Yeah, let me.
I'm going to mute now.
No, thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks, Patricia, for your comments. Is there anyone else which to comment on this application? Tonight, and there will be another opportunity, as we'll be adjourning. All right, seeing none, I, let's see, when do you think we can?
Yeah, Michael, you mentioned, I think it was earlier this afternoon, that you were aiming for the March meeting, is that correct?
Well, we're, we're, our goal is yes. Most of the comments we, we received already, we've been working on. Our lighting plan is already at the consultant to, to be done. There is existing, there are existing holes on the property now, they will be staying, and what we're doing with them is converting them from the metal halide that they are now over to an LED fixture.
All right, keep in mind, we, the town likes to keep under 3,000 temperature.
I'm sorry?
The town likes to keep under 3,000 Kelvin temperature for those, for LEDs, because they can, they can look like the sun when you're looking at that, when you're trying to spec that out.
I will, I will let our consultant know that. We are, we are adding a couple of wall packs on the building, so we'll be taking care of that with a lighting plan, make sure that we have zero, zero bleed at the property line, especially taking into account that the residential right behind us.
Yep.
So, so we are, and we have, we've hired Hudson Land Design, Dan Kohler, to do the engineering for the utilities. So the only thing that may hold us back, or we may have not completed by the March, is we need some survey work done, and we're finding it hard to get a surveyor, because they're also busy right now. And now with the snow cover, it's, it's impossible.
Yep.
Mike, what's the, what is the survey needed for?
We were asked for some spot elevation grading.
Okay.
One, I believe the engineers, the engineer comments were, were some spot elevations to show the grading.
Okay.
All right.
I know that, that wouldn't hold anything up for planning's comments. Don, would that, would that be an obstacle? Are there any critical comments of engineering that will really depend upon grading that would hold up a next submittal?
No, I, I don't think so.
All right, thanks, Don and Eric. In that case, I move we adjourn the public hearing to March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
And if we need to, we can always just adjourn it again.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, next month, so if you know.
Just if you're, yeah, if you're anxious to get those change, the updates in for March deadline, we're happy to oblige.
Yeah, the, the Department of Corrections is, they're looking to get over there.
Uh huh.
They're looking to start the construction, so.
All right.
So we're, they're pushing us.
Let's see, move on to going around the board for comments. Start with Peter?
In response to the concern that was raised by Mrs. Longguard, the neighbors on Fairmont, could we contact the DOC, possibly Eric, or Lisa, or someone, just to determine if there has been a history of any, any kind of incidents at that location? Just so we'll have it for the record?
Sure.
Also, with regard to the lighting plan, you know, banks have, have a, for, as an example, have a separate standard for lighting, which is understandable. I'm just wondering if, if a facility like the DOC would also, or possibly should also have a specific standard for lighting, based on, you know, the type of use in the facility?
Well, this is a, it's a, it's basically, it's, it's state hours is nine to five.
Right.
So there's no evenings and weekends usually.
Well, my house, it gets dark, and, and between December and March, it gets dark at 5 o'clock. I don't know about your house, you look like you're in Hawaii.
I wish.
Maybe it's different there.
No, no, I understand, I'm just, I was just letting you know the hours, that, that's all.
I understand.
Okay, if it's normally at 5, that's, yeah, it's a certain, small time of the year, but that's in, around the holidays.
Well, we'll, we'll, I'll verify that.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I really want to know, just to ask, so we'll have, have an answer. Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks, Peter. Ben?
I was going to ask about the hours, but Peter took care of that. Are you currently receiving guests in the old site while you're?
Yes.
You know, remodeling the new site?
Yes, they, they've, they're going to be continuing their operation, as they have been for the last 20-plus years.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right, thanks, Ben. Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of questions still out there, you know. I just wanted to reiterate something that the water department stated, that they're looking for a backflow preventer, it was due as of May 2020, so it's a little overdue for that. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, some landscaping would be nice over there, you know, I think we're still looking to see what you're going to do for snow storage. Do you know what they do for it right now? Like where, where, where they do that?
Right now, they just, they, they just push it off to the edge. There's so much parking, with only the one tenant there, the, the eastern side is really not used, so they hardly plow it at all.
They probably just mount it up back there, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, I think, I think we're still looking for some things, but, you know, I'm sure you'll answer all our questions.
Oh, yeah. We're, we're going to be eliminating, you know, I, I don't want to say a lot of the existing asphalt, but we're going to be eliminating some of it for landscaping and, and trying to create a little bit of a bigger buffer in the rear.
That sounds good.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be good.
You know, one of the engineering comments was, we are, we are absolutely maintaining the gate to the property, to the roadway behind us. I think I was going to say it right, but Talmedy?
Yep.
Okay.
Improve it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was one, that was one thing that I had brought up. I know that there are some, some kids that I think, you know, come through back there and stop to go to the gas station, so, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, yeah, that's at the end of that street, right behind there, the Talmedy Place. All right, let's go to Ahmed. Any comments, Ahmed? On this? You're, you're on mute still?
No, sorry, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Joan?
I don't have any real questions, except one. Would it be possible to have the security cameras depicted on future submissions? So that we can see the number of them, just for the neighbors? Thank you.
And Rocco?
Nothing more, thank you.
All right, thanks. I mean, my two cents is, I think everything's been covered mostly. I mentioned the fence, if there is something there to the gas station, I think there's a disrepair to investigate whose that is. And, yeah, I'm in agreement with some landscaping along Manchester Road as well, you know, some street trees even there, if, if that's possible to work in. You know, some street trees even there, if that's possible to work in. Make it look a little nicer. Alright, ready for motion?
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed activity is a type-two action and is not subject to seeker review pursuant to six NYCRR 617.5C7 of the seeker regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded, type-two action. Call to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following, one through twelve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, to defer. Call to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Alright, good luck, and look forward to the improvements.
See you everyone next month.
Alright, take care. Next up is Hurricane Grill and Wings, Pergola. Who's here representing Hurricane Grill tonight?
Alex. Hello. Hello. I'm, uh, funny, I just had to mute my, I'm, I actually am on two planning board meetings at the same time, unfortunately. I just got called up for an agenda at the Woodstock Planning Board, and the client's speaking right now, and I muted. So it just happened, you guys, I'm called up at the same exact moment. Fault meetings.
You want us to, we could switch, come back to you if you-
So you received, you received all the, the drawings, right? So you- I have, uh, let me share my screen. I did, I did email some renderings of the, um, of the new, hold on a moment.
Looks nice.
Never really shared a screen before. Can everyone see the rendering?
Perfect.
Yep.
And what's the material of that? Is it wood?
That is all wood, yes. It's wood with a solid, a semi-solid stain. And we decided to go with Benjamin Moore Siegel Gray. And I also have a sample, a sample of it painted here in front of me as well. Which will have a, you could, it's semi-solid, so you get a little bit of the wood grain exposure.
Sounds good.
Okay, yep. I will, thank you.
Something that only Zoom allows.
That is multitasking.
Wow, he's killing it.
Okay, sorry. Let me try to turn this down now. Think of this one's ending, so this is good.
Any further comments on it, or should I move to- Alright.
I have some other images here. For some reason I can't. I apologize. Let's see here.
That looks nice.
There's a couple of other images I have. This, this is going from the parking lot, you know, with the entryway, as you're entering into the wing, Hurricane Wings. This would be a view closer, like from the sidewalk off the street.
Yep.
And then we have a, a view, you know, closer to the, the front of the Juliet, looking into the site. At the seating area.
Did I just ask what anchors those posts? Are you gonna have footings for-
Yes, yes, full, there's concrete footings going down the frost step, and the posts are set in, set into the concrete. That's the way it was, it was designed by actually, by voice collaboration, and then I, I did the site plan and developed these colored renderings for a presentation to the board.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let me go to Kirsten for department's comments.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I don't have too much to say. The, the application is on for a public hearing. Staff is recommending opening and closing the public hearing this evening, adopting a seeker resolution for a type-two action, and adopting a conditional amended site plan approval, and going forth with conducting architectural review. County planning did provide their comment memo, they reviewed the project, its local concern. So if the board did opt to go that way, they could do so. I just wanted them to clean up the site plan sheet a little bit, we need signature blocks. There are a couple of comments that we received from engineering that they're looking for some more information, some more information about the architectural finishes and all that, but that did come in subsequent to the board getting these comments. The drawings that Michael is showing today actually came into our office about four o'clock, so hopefully we'll be able to settle out some of those comments. We did receive comments from the water department, and we're gonna have to, Michael, hopefully you were able to review these, but it's about the columns and proximity to the water service line, and so we're gonna need to make sure that all of those details are hammered out prior to being able to move forward with any kind of construction of any kind.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm aware of the water line there, and, you know, we plan on, you know, mitigating that, that water line, you know, to you know, get either, and if there becomes a conflict, when we do, when we, when we have the lines marked out, then we would make a slight adjustment in where the posting is, or potentially develop another type of footing that can bridge the water line. So, you know, either way, I know it can be, it can be, you know, handled without any trouble.
Yeah, absolutely. The only word of caution is that I would recommend, you know, taking a look at that sooner than later, even perhaps. I could put you in touch and help facilitate a conversation with the water department if it was necessary, but that will be, that will have to be taken care of prior to site plan signature. So even before a pre-construction meeting would happen, where we would talk through some of the more finite details, we will need that in advance. So whenever you resubmit for signature on plans, you know, I would recommend you reaching out to the water department, or I could help, like I said, help facilitate that.
Yeah, you want to avoid digging up utilities.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I resubmitted the plan today with the signature blocks. I thought I addressed all the comments with that new submittal, but, you know, late, late today, but I, I see you actually, what you're, what you're saying is you actually will want the water line drawn on there, not just a note to handle the water line on the, on the plan.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at a resubmission. We need a response to comments in writing, so when, that's the same as what you submitted the first time around, we sort of need in writing again. I know it's-
True. Not a problem.
Alright, sounds good. Uh, Don, do you have anything to add to that right now?
Probably our only major comment was one that's already being talked about, but we wanted to see all the existing utilities so that there was no conflict, so we'd be looking for water sewer, electric, gas, anything that could be in the way of the footings.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Alright, and then the, it's time for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this application?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, who, by, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone on the call tonight wish to comment on this application? Scroll through the entries here, you can raise your hand on Zoom.
Raise your hand on Zoom, or star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. And not seeing anyone. No one's waving.
Nope, alright. I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Alright, let's go on the board for comments. Start with Ahmed this time.
It looks good, the changes. Nothing to add here. We're looking forward to see the plan.
Joan?
Sorry, I was having troubles unmuting myself. Um, no, I have no comments.
Okay, Rocco?
Uh, no comments, looks good.
Nicole?
You have any lighting changes?
No, there'll be no, no lighting added to the plan. Just the existing lights that are there.
Okay.
Alright, good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ben?
I have nothing.
And Peter? Peter, you on mute?
I'm not, am I muted?
No, Peter, I don't know anything about, I don't hear Peter. Well, soon you have no comments then.
Peter, Peter, do you have any comments?
Me, no, I said no.
No, not Ben, Peter.
Well, me. All I had to hope, Don or someone keeps an eye on the, where the utilities are marked out. It's not that easy to move the forms around, so that's my only comment.
Thanks, Peter. And mine is, same, it's, it looks like a great improvement. Good to see that happening. So, we're ready for motions?
I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for seeker type-two action pursuant to seeker part 617.5C9 requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco? Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed? Ahmed, do you agree?
Okay. I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for Hurricane Grill and Wings, Pergola amended site plan, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following, one through eight.
Second.
Okay, we gotta finish, moved and seconded, gotta finish the previous vote. Ahmed, did you have a vote on the previous motion?
Yeah, aye.
Aye, and mine was aye, so motion passes seven to zero for for seeker. And then the conditional motion has seconded also. I call to question by roll call vote again, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Alright, you're good to go, except for architecture. Let's say, you, you've put up the renderings there, does any board members have any comments on the architecture or the choice of color? Seeing no comments, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Comment?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Alright, you're all set. Good luck with the project. Next on the agenda, we have some, Ahmed, some adjournments. For Locust Grove Crossing LLC, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, Stewart Shops at 2245 South Road. I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, Arlington Farms, Malabar Realty. I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, I move that we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. We please ask you limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and we'll consider the comments made during this portion of the meeting, but not respond to them directly during the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which to comment on any other agenda items tonight?
Yeah, Anne, Anne has her hand raised.
Alright, Anne? Fire away.
Anne Shoshin, Six Word Town Councilperson, but I have been advised by our attorney I must inform you that I'm speaking as a resident and not as a town councilperson, so.
Alright.
This is my opinion, and I'd like to say that I've had a chance to review the Raymond Avenue school project, and we're really thrilled with the changes that have been made, and I just love the direction this is going in. And also wanted to point out to you that many of the things they're doing fall right in line with the comprehensive plan that we're currently almost finalized on. In particular, making the buildings more energy efficient and reducing energy consumption by combining buildings together. Having a green space. We did a workshop where there was presentations of possible designs, each one included a green gathering space for the residents. And I think this is a lovely idea to just have a little park, a park, a little breather space. It's nice, it's on the sidewalk that, you know, the residents and the public can enjoy it too. And lastly, saving the school. That is just amazing, and that's part of our plan to reuse historic buildings wherever we can, so this is just awesome. We're thrilled with the changes, and we really wish Jacob all the best in moving forward with this plan, so thank you.
Alright, thanks for your comments, Anne. Anyone else comment on any other agenda items tonight?
And you can raise your hand, or just unmute yourself if you're on Zoom, star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Not seeing any.
Alright, I move we resume the meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next up is BP3 Springside Development. Do I see? I see Steve out there?
Steve, you're muted.
Yeah, Steve, you're muted.
Is there any, you gonna talk for this, Steve?
Yeah, sure, might as well get started. Hi, everybody, good to see you all.
Yeah, sure, might as well get started. Hi, everybody, good to see you all. We, you know, we, uh, got our conditional approval from you on August twentieth or something like that of last year, um, thank you, of course. And we've been working diligently on, uh, getting ready to start construction and right now we're planning to, uh, begin our effort, um, sometime around the beginning of May. And, and, uh, you know, as you have gotten to know us, you know, we kind of keep working on our design, um, and let it evolve and, you know, in the spirit of trying to, um, improve what we're doing. Um, we have a couple of housing projects under construction or being finished throughout the county and we've learned a bunch of stuff from them and, you know, the, the, and we want to make, reflect some of those changes in what we're doing here. This is a kind of a, a simple, um, presentation in, in some regards in that we're making no changes whatsoever to the site, to what you, um, have approved. And we, we know that we have some conditions that are still outstanding, um, from that conditional approval that we're working on resolving and we'll have our resubmission back, uh, before the end of this month, uh, you know, to Eric Holman and, uh, um, you know, as per that last approval. What we, what we learned though was that the fifth floor on this building, which is really a penthouse, um, is, you know, was a little overdesigned for the twenty-three units, we had much more space than we, we thought, uh, we needed for the functions that we want to have up there. And so we, we've just shifted our gears in terms of how we're using that fifth floor, um, with, with the addition of two studio penthouse units. And, um, in some of the spaces that were going to be either storage spaces or, um, there was going to be a pet washing facility or a gym and we've moved the gym to another spot. So you can see in the floor plans that, um, we've submitted, um, on the north side of the building, there are just these two, two nice units up there, so the project goes from twenty-three to twenty-five units. But there are no massing changes to the building whatsoever, um, just refinements, um, in the, in the material, uh, openings where windows are and we, we've put a couple of decks for these units so they have some out, outdoor patio spaces. Um, we had some mechanical equipment on the, the roof above this penthouse and they were all screened so you don't see it. And we've moved all the units up to this, uh, this, uh, roof of the fifth floor, again, you don't see any of it, but, uh, we used the area where we did have those condenser units for really pleasant outdoor space. But the public spaces on the fifth floor haven't changed at all in the, uh, in the sense of there's a really wonderful south facing patio. And, uh, you know, there is a, a nice gathering room and, um, you know, there's a, a gym as well. And then there's a business office or a dining room up there with a small catering kitchen. So, you know, we, we, uh, are just coming back, um, and requesting, um, a minor change because we did have the excess parking. So, you know, we figured, well, let's use these units and use the space better and, uh, um, you know, we have some renderings that we can show you, um, of what the fifth floor looks like and, you know, we, Anthony Giuliano, who, uh, is running, uh, the project here, he brings to our office, uh, some tremendous skills in doing for the last twenty-five or thirty years, uh, mid-rise and high-rise buildings. And so his skill sets, um, have really been unbelievable in terms of what we've learned and, and how we've made this a better building and hopefully you'll, you'll feel the same way. But there are no design changes to the outside of the building, uh, again, nothing to the site, um, all the conditions that, um, have been part of this approval, you know, um, will still, you know, you know, we still have to address and, and, uh, most of those issues, you know, we have under control. There was one other issue that, um, I had a chance to work with, um, Eric Holman on and Eric was so great to, um, help coordinate a meeting with the DOT. And the DOT meeting was, um, Eric, maybe you can help me on this, but it was complicated in that when you asked for when you could get an answer back, um, and they were being terrific, but they said, well, between maybe a day and a year. And it had to do with the sidewalk that the board had asked us to approach the, the state on from the front entrance to Route forty-four fifty-five. And we're not so sure what the outcome of that, um, is going to be, our, our deed unfortunately says some, it has some language in there that says no access. And when I bought the property from the state, you know, it was just something not in my, my brainwaves at the time, thought that no access meant no curb cuts for driveways. And never thought about that we would have a sidewalk that, you know, is ten or twelve feet or something like that. And they interpreted initially that no access meant no sidewalk either. So we, and Eric was terrific about trying to push the issue, saying the board really liked this idea, we wanted to make, it's an urban friendly, you know, idea. And they're going to get back to us, but just an update on that, because we didn't want to slow down the construction of the project, but we wanted to make sure that you knew that we were using our best efforts to get the state to allow us to do this and, um, I don't know, Eric, if there was anything that you wanted to add on that, if I got that right?
Thanks, Steve.
No, I, I think you captured it.
Thank you.
Right.
So, so again, you know, we're here tonight to, um, you know, really just in, using some of the square footage differently. Um, it changes the bulk table in that we added, uh, two, um, you know, there's, it, it, you know, it uses two more of the parking spaces. There was one comment from Mark, I guess, on the, um, you know, on, and we sent a drawing that's, um, part, and it was a mistake in what we sent you. It's an updated drawing that's going to be part of our resubmission and it showed a hatched area by the, the western entrance.
Yep.
And that hatched area was actually asked for through conversations between the, the, uh, our traffic consultant, Phil Greeley, and, and through JMC. And it had to do with site distance, so that, that was a change that was requested and that was part of our approval, so that was why, that's a little different from what was in the final drawing that was sent, so. It wasn't a change to the project, it was just our responding to the request and we, we just sent you the wrong drawing that was, uh, it could have been the one that was, that was part of the approval, but this will be the drawing that'll actually be the one that gets signed off by the chair once we're ready for that final sign off. That makes sense, that was elliptical, I guess.
Thanks for explaining that.
There was a comment from Mark, I guess, in his letter about the, 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 why those striped area was there and I think that was actually your, your, and eagle eye in picking out the difference, but I think that was also your idea of making that safer. There were not having a car parked by that entrance along, uh, on Springside Avenue. But, um, all good here, we appreciate you considering this and I, if, if you want to see those, uh, close-ups of the fifth floor, um, you know, Anthony's here and we can put them up if, he gets the screen if you want to see that.
Sure, we can have him throw that up quick and, uh, take a quick look at it.
Again, this, actually, if you want to go back to that, Anthony, that was really helpful.
Go back to what?
To that floor plan that you just had up, which is the current floor plan of the fifth floor.
And can you see it? Because I have it on my screen.
Yeah, we don't see it now, it was up for a minute and then just disappeared.
Okay.
Now it's here, yeah.
Okay.
No, that's, no, that, that's the other one, so we want to see the new one.
This is the new.
Oh, yeah, okay, so this plan shows on the top side of the left drawing, um, where the two studio units are, they're really wonderful studios and they have nice, um, decks that are also facing, facing north. And you, you know, they have lots of nice features from, you know, laundry rooms and walk-in closets and they're all, meet all the handicap requirements and stuff, it has lots of, they have lots of glass as you'd want if you're on the top floor of that building. To the right, um, you know, I know one of the concerns of this board has always been not being able to see the mechanical systems, so there's a roof plan, Anthony, if you can move that to the, right there, no?
Scroll over.
Yeah, thank you. So you can see that we have all the units up above and we made one design change where the, the screening system is set back off the edge of the buildings. It's a little bit more refined looking, but again, you see nothing, that screening system was, was there before, um, along the edge of the, you know, the, um, you know, so I hope what I'm saying in words makes sense to you, but.
Yeah.
Can you see the renderings?
Yes, that'd be great. So again, here is the, the, uh, the penthouse itself, those two glass walls that you see in the center, um, are the gathering, uh, community room. To the right, there's a, you know, a gym, and then to the left is the, you know, it's, it's a room that can function both as office space for the tenants or it can be used for, you know, if somebody wants to have a, a dinner party or a meeting or something like that. And again, there's a, a, a small catering kitchen off of that, you can see the screening system on the roof, um, and again, that gives you the, an example of, um, you know, of why you won't see the, the, um, the mechanical units as well. Um, all else is what you've seen before, if you want to show Anthony down below just a couple of other views. You know, again, you, um, you, you can sort of see the penthouse up above, we're using a similar material, um, you know, as, as at the, on the entrance form. And different views, you know, of the penthouse and stuff. If you can actually go back to the close-up of the, yeah, so there's a couple different shots, uh, the one on the, on the left, again, shows, um, you know, the, the deck for the one studio. And the one on the right, that, that's the public space that, you know, has the planters and that's facing south overlooking, you know, the, you know, the Vassar College campus and, you know, uh, views south in, in Duchess County, the great views from up there. So we think we've, you know, we've, uh, uh, you know, made a better, uh, plan for the upper floor and, uh, you know, thank you for considering the changes that we're making.
All right, thanks, Steve, yeah, it looks good, let's go to Eric for his, uh, department comments.
Sure, uh, yeah, this was, uh, the proposal for the additional two units, uh, it's a change in density, so it, again, similar to another application, it, it warranted another look at, uh, secret consistency and by all appearances, um, from review, it looks quite consistent with no substantial changes. The, the recommendation here is to waive the public hearing, um, it's, it's been through public hearing before and it's a pretty good substantial change, um, and for a conditional approval, uh, Steve characterized the DOT meeting correctly. I, I think I would suggest pending the unlikely soon outcome of that, um, if we could perhaps, uh, make at a condition that the pedestrian connection and the hatched parking area, uh, be subject to a review and determination by staff. That will give both, you know, the greatest opportunity to provide for that connection if we can and if not, uh, let it go if the board is comfortable with that as an outcome. We did receive, uh, county planning comments, uh, today, which is that it's local concern, so there's no obstacle to the board proceeding with action.
All right, thanks, Eric. I don't think there's, uh, anything from, uh, your standpoint, Don, on this?
Uh, no, we just wanted the engineered report updated and the rest of our comments were left over from the last final approval.
Okay, great. Let's just go around the board for, uh, for comments here, start with Nicole this time.
Yep, so I, um, just wanted to, uh, ask you, did you get with the fire department, I see that they saw that, um, they were looking to relocate one of those hydrants on the north side, or to the north side, I should say?
We agreed to, Nicole, we agreed to all that as part of the approval, so there's no issues whatsoever with that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ben?
Just one thing, that mechanical room next to the, uh, penthouse, can you hear anything out of there?
No.
On the deck or anything?
No, we, you know, we, uh, uh, you, you, one of the reasons we actually moved the mechanical units up there was to make it so that you could be, you know, on those decks and enjoying the, being outside and not having a noise issue. Before they were adjacent to the outdoor roof decks and so this is a much better place for them.
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you.
That was it.
Peter? Peter, are you there?
Is it me?
Yep.
It looks good, well thought out, good luck.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Peter.
Rocco?
No, it looks good.
Joan?
Looks good, no comments.
Ahmed?
No comments, good.
Yeah, myself, uh, yep, I, I like it, it's good, uh, nothing dear, the only thing I hate is the, is the possibility of losing that sidewalk connection, but, um, we'll make that a condition of, uh, approval that staff, uh, review on that decision. And hopefully the DOT will have some sense.
We could also use you on the next call chair, because it was, uh, I mean, everybody, you know, I think everybody saw the logic of, of the move and it's just the process, you know, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it, it sometimes is complicated.
All right, ready for motions, Nicole?
Uh, did you waive the public hearing?
No, I did not yet.
You want to do that first?
You can go ahead and do that.
You want me to do it?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, I move that the planning board waive the site plan and special use permit public hearing.
Okay. Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board as seeker lead agency determines that the Springside Development fifth floor revisions proposed January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one involve incremental changes to the BP three Springside Development Project of negligible magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous seeker negative declaration for the project adopted August twentieth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker. Uh, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended special use permit approval and conditional amended site plan approval amended architectural approval excluding the pavilion for the Springside Development fifth floor revisions proposed January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, AKA amendments to the BP three Springside Development Project subject to all the, to all conditions of the previous August twenty, twenty twenty, conditioned approvals of the BP three Springside Development Project and the, and the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to one through seven as well as the sidewalk.
And the.
Second.
And the striped area to review by staff decision. Okay. Called to question by, roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve, and for sharing the update and, uh, good luck with the, uh, spring construction.
We appreciate that, stay safe, thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Next up, Shady Brook Trailer Park, come back in for a modification, who's on representing that tonight?
Looks like Larry.
I am here, good to see you all.
Hey, Larry, good to see you.
It's been a while since I've been in front of you, your board.
Yes, it has been.
Pretty amazing, pretty amazing seeing a list of nine public hearings.
Think we've seen your son.
You guys, yeah, yeah, hopefully that'll be the, be more and more of the case. You guys, yeah, yeah, hopefully that'll be the, be more and more of the case.
All right, uh, anything, comments on this, bring in some Phil. We go to Eric directly for department comments on this.
All right. Uh, was, let's see, was Larry gonna say anything?
Did you have any?
Uh, you know, you wanna, if you want me to give a, a brief overview, if the board would like, I can do that, but it's been a long night, so if you feel like.
Yeah, we can, we can, it's up, Carl, what do you think? Shall I just go ahead?
You're just bringing, bringing in some Phil, right? To, uh.
Yeah, the bu, the bu, the bottom line, Carl, was when, when we left you folks, you know, Charlie wasn't happy with the height of the trailer, the, 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 uh, manufactured homes, and when we were, uh, ironing out the details with FEMA, it turned out that we were gonna have to elevate him an additional two feet. And he, he just, uh, he couldn't bear with the fact that all the work that went into this project and having the, some of these units sitting eight feet above grade, so he, he went to work and he was able to orchestrate it and make it work with Phil, and it's just, it's so much better project in so many better ways that I would love to explain it all to you, but it's been a long night, so I'll.
Yeah, I, I understand.
To Eric.
That sounds like an improvement, uh, I mean, there's the big berm around the whole project too to help with flooding, but FEMA doesn't recognize that.
Right, right.
All right, uh, let's move on to Eric then.
Sure, uh, yeah, I think Larry's got it, a proposal for, uh, to raise the level of the project, uh, make the units, to decrease the height above the ground that the units will need to be. So that, that's a good thing. The, uh, the previous, the conditions of, uh, uh, the amended site plan from June nineteen are in effect. The amendments don't seem to have sparked any significant issues. I don't think there's anything here that can't be handled by conditions. There was, um, a little, they came up with regard to the floodplain permit, uh, that's still outstanding, so we've incorporated that as a recommend, it's in our recommendations to obtain as a condition of approval to get the floodplain permit ironed out, and as I saw the last day or two, that seems to be moving ahead. And we did receive comments from the county planning department, it's a, as a matter of local concern, so there's nothing to, uh, obstruct the board from moving forward if it wants to, and we have a recommendation to waive the public hearing, um, to find consistency with previous seeker review, um, and for a conditioned approval if you're inclined.
All right, thanks Eric. Any, uh, it seems like something that Don might want to weigh in on?
Um, as usual, we are looking for, uh, some revised SWP and some, some different grading, uh, and we're looking for some of the grading to be revised, um, but other than that, it's, it's pretty, pretty simple.
Okay, thanks, Don. Move on to, to going around the board then. Start with Peter.
Uh, just two things, one is, uh, to visit that site is, is transformative, I mean, with the work that's been done there is really extraordinary. I mean, it was, it was a mess before, now it's a beautiful site. I think the soil, whatever fill is being used there should be tested before it's, uh, before it's delivered, and then at some point during the process, whether it's halfway in or, or whenever, for the benefit of everyone concerned, it should be retested. That's my only comment.
It is.
Okay, well, the, the intention, Peter, just so you're aware, is that any fill that is brought in is going to have documentation, uh, provided by licensed New York State lab to, that it's appropriate clean fill and appropriate for the use, so we will be definitely providing that documentation, and if, if there's a way to, to provide additional testing as we go along, we can certainly do that.
It's, it's for your benefit, uh, as well.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
You know, we, this, this project has been a, a project of trying to, um, to burn a candle on both ends, we've been trying to meet regulations that didn't really seem to make sense, and to try to make sure that we, we develop a project that works practic, practically, you know, that the, the flooding that happens on that site doesn't occur over the berm, it comes from a source that was never modeled, it can't, it comes from across the road. And I think what we've ended up with is a, is a project that both satisfies the regulations that gives the town, you know, the, the, the hat hook that they need, and it also ensures that the people, not only, not only the homes now, but also the infrastructure and the roads will be protected from flooding, um, should it, should it ever occur again. And, um, you know, to do that, bringing in that fill, we've got to make sure that that fill does, does work and do the things that we needed to do, so absolutely, we are, rest, rest assured, we are, we are going to give a lot of attention to that.
I assume.
Larry, this is Eric, can I just, just to clarify Peter's comments a little bit? When there's lab testing of the fill, does that occur, where in the process of transporting the fill does that occur?
The, you'll, it'll have, we'll have documentation prior to it coming in.
Right, but does it occur before, uh, the, of the, at the location where it's coming from?
Yes, yes, yes. So, so that, so what I, what I foresee the kind of testing that you're gonna see from, from, from the source, you're gonna see that it's appropriate material with no contamination. The testing that you're gonna see come from the site is that it's appropriate for the use and that, you know, if it's.
I see.
Used underneath roads, then it's, 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 you know, it's got suitable, suitable structural characteristics. If it's gonna be used in the landscape areas, it's got suitable water permissivity characteristics. So that's the kind of information I think is pertinent, that's the kind of information that you guys will see.
And is that gonna be available, um, before the site plan is signed, or is that gonna be available as it's being prepared for trucking? I'm just trying to scope something out to, to get what Peter wants in a way that's not gonna, that's gonna, you know, allow you to go ahead with a minimum of delay.
I would, I would hope that that would be a condition of the site plan approval, that that, that would be ongoing, because it's probably gonna continue to happen in case he goes, he's got several different sources that he's going to be using, so I would hope that the site plan could get approved and that could happen in conjunction with the construction.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would suggest doing, is making an addition of the site plan approval, sure.
Okay.
Okay, great. And I assume that all has to be compacted, uh, for building, once it gets in?
It does, actually during the pre, the pre-construction meeting, Tim Sickles was out and said that there's actually, um, specific, special inspection requirements for the areas that will be below the, the pads, and we're in the process of bringing in a, a structural engineer to, to assist us with that and, and get that testing in place. There's already been a, um, a, a testing lab and a, um, geotechnical company that's been evaluating the quality of the material from a, a structural standpoint, so all of those things are, are all in motion already.
All right, thanks Larry. Let's, uh, continue around, uh, for comments, Ben?
This is great, it's really great to see that site the way it is now, it was such an eyesore, and it's good to see the progress that's being made and, and we wish you all the best in getting it done and getting it done as quickly as you can.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. What, what I love is I, I, I'm starting to see the owner get excited, he's, he's actually getting excited about getting this built and has seen his vision come through, so.
That's, that's good to hear, he, he really cares, good.
That is great. It's a nice clean slate out there right now.
It is.
Uh, Nicole?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
All right, thanks, Rocco?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
And Joan?
Uh, my only question is Eric's, uh, notes indicate an increase in truck trips, that twenty-four trips a day, what is that increased from?
Zero.
Okay. Cause you had no fill coming in before, okay.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah.
And I'm, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure the trucks have their act together, they're gonna be securing all the fill, you're not gonna be leaving a, a trail as you come in and, and exit the property.
We have, we have ideal situation, we already have paved roads that we, we can work off of, that, you know, and we'll just be filling over top of them as we work ourselves out of the project.
Right.
So, but, but that will be monitored very closely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Joan, and Ahmed?
No comments.
All right, myself, uh, yep, uh, I just had a question, uh, do you know about how, how long that fill process will take, how many, you know, if it's twenty-four trucks a day, or? Is that over?
Uh, we estimated, I think it was gonna be about twenty-five thousand yards of material, and I thought, I, I mean, I, I think if they did it straight, it was like a thirty-day period, a thirty to forty-five day period.
Okay.
But I don't think he's gonna be doing it constantly, I think it's gonna be mostly weekend work, so I think you're gonna see three or four days of truck traffic, and then you're gonna see nothing, and then you'll see it.
Okay.
But if continuous, I would estimate about thirty to forty-five days.
And Larry, do you know where they're gonna be coming in from? I presume fifty-five, or they won't be coming, like?
Um, one of them is gonna be coming from south, um, down by peak scale, and one of them is gonna be coming from locally, so I would imagine from fifty-five.
Okay, I mean, I think that would be the preferred route as opposed to winding through, um, coming the back way, so to speak.
Yeah, and I would imagine probably even the ones that come from south are probably gonna come up nine and then come across fifty-five.
Okay.
Yep, stick to the main roads.
Right.
All right. Sounds good. I moved that the planning board waive the site plan and special use permit public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Nicole, you want to continue?
I move that the planning board continuing in its role as lead agency for the, for the coordinated review of this project as an unlisted action makes the following seeker review findings. In comparison to the seeker negative declaration adopted June twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, for the existing site plan and special use permit, the Shady Brook Trailer Park amended site plan will involve the importation of an additional estimated twenty thousand cubic feet, cubic yards of fill to raise previously planned site grades by a depth of two to three feet and relative, rela, relative, related utility stormwater and flood damage prevention revisions in order to reduce the height above grade for finished floor elevations of the planned mobile homes on the site while maintaining their minimum required height above base flood elevation. No changes to site use or lot layout or substantial increases to site disturbance, impervious surface, erosion, or sedimentation, stormwater treatment facilities, traffic or other effects were identified based on the information and materials provided. Accordingly, accordingly, the Shady Brook Trailer Park amended site plan does not propose project changes which may result in any significant adverse environmental impacts not previously identified and addressed in the planning board seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action of June twenty, twenty nineteen, which is hereby reaffirmed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker. Called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven zero.
I move that the planning board finds that the project as amended by the Shady Brook Trailer Park amended site plan would continue to comply with the standards for site plan and special use permit approval as more particularly set forth in the planning board's provision, prev, previous revolu, resolution of conditions, conditional amended site plan approval of June twenty, twenty nineteen, and previously Shady Brook Mobile Home Special Use Permit Resolution of June twenty, twenty nineteen. And I move that the planning board find that the Shady Brook Trailer Park amended site plan would re, would fulfill the purposes of the chapter two-ten zoning of the town plan and the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval and conditional special use permit approval subject to the said resolution of June twenty, twenty nineteen and subject to the following. The applicant shall respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive above not limited to one through ten.
Second.
Okay, we just want to add, uh, eleven, and that is that the soils, uh, to be properly tested.
So Nicole, could you read that all back again, please?
Eleven, and do I, do I, do we hear it? Do you confirm that eleven, Nicole, for your motion?
Yep, and eleven, uh, that soils will be tested.
Properly tested.
Properly tested.
And the second. Second again. Called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
And myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Good luck, good seeing you Larry and.
Carl, thank you, you know, you guys got a lot of great projects on your agenda tonight, and, and that's, that's a, that's an.
You know, this is, this is one of the best ones that we've seen in a long time, because the town really needs affordable housing.
But you know what, Peter, these projects don't happen without a lot of work from both sides, and I, I can't say thank you enough for the, for the, the cooperation that we've received from this board, so thank you all for this.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
You guys have, you guys have a good night.
Night Larry.
You too. Thank you.
We got some nights ahead of it, some ahead of us though here. Next up is Hutch and Heritage Directional Signs, and, uh.
Good evening, can, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh, this is Susan Burke from Sabre representing the applicant. I'm here to present the pylon sign again, or the directional sign, sorry, I'm gonna try and share my screen here. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, last where we left off, we had presented, um, this sign to the board, and, um, the reaction was that it wasn't, uh, didn't have a historic look and feel. And we were asked to come back with three designs, alternate designs. So, but we did, um, it was recommended that we work with some stone and/or brick. So, um, we came up with three different versions, stone on the bottom, one stone pillar and two stone pillars. Whether they're stone or brick, that's kind of irrelevant. Um, these we felt were much too heavy and too large. So we came up with another design, which we felt was, um, in keeping with the historic components of the site as well as having a much lighter, airier feel for a small sign. We also have another sample here with only one pillar. The board wants to comment on these designs.
All right. Looks good.
Evening everybody.
Move on?
We'll get to, uh, go to Eric for his, uh, comments.
Uh, sure, uh, the, uh, let's see, we, as we pointed out before, this, they don't technically meet the definition of directional or, or exempt signs in the code, uh, but the freestanding signs are required to obtain site plan approval from the board. That's the way we've divided up consideration is, is as you see, um, in the recommendation, uh, first focusing on kind of the number, the location of, the number of the panels and the area of the sign, which will be subject to the board's discretion, um, and then perhaps based upon that, you can all, you, you could also consider the, uh, design of the support structure for, uh, there are a couple presented for your consideration. I will point out that the county planning, uh, we did receive a letter just this afternoon from them, uh, they recommended denial, and to act contrary to the recommendation would require the vote, board to vote, um, by super majority, um, and with an explanation as to why they acted otherwise. We've get provided you with a recommendation that, that breaks, breaks down the possibilities, um, for. We've provided you with a recommendation that, that breaks, breaks down the possibilities, um, for either granting a proposal, denying it, or deferring it based on your comments. I think that, I think that captures our remarks, and I don't know that there were any other, uh, just checking. I don't think there were any other comments received.
So at the last meeting, I was under the impression that, um, the board was in agreement that we needed the signs, um, we have one sign here, one sign here, and one sign here. You know, this sign is obviously necessary to direct people into the shopping center rather than up Hudson Heritage Drive. We also have a requirement in our, one of our national leases to be directed from, from this, this entrance towards the Starbucks store down here, because if you come in, this is over a quarter of a mile away, you're not gonna be able to see that store, if you're traveling this way, you come in here, you have no idea that Starbucks is over here.
My mic working?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
So, you know, we feel that this sign is absolutely necessary. Likewise, this sign here, um, when you come in, the shop right building is, is far back, you know, we don't want people driving around and not knowing where they're going, that, that leads to just accidents and problems. The third, the, the center sign, um, if you're coming in this way, you really wanna be directed to go in to shop right this way. You wanna know that Starbucks is, is straight ahead, and it would be nice to be directed to whatever tenant, want, tenant or tenants winds up in here, um, that would be one of our, um, larger national tenants. Right now, we have CBS down here, so that would be something you would access through here. The county comment was that we have signs that just say shops that way, which doesn't really help a person navigate 35 acres of stores. The distance between here and here is equal to the distance between the town hall and Route 44. You can't see Route 44 from your office. I, I, I really was under the impression that we had gone over this, and, uh, you know, we had all agreed that we needed these signs. I don't wanna pay to put them up, if you don't, if, they're not gonna be approved, it's just saving me money, you know. I think we need them, every other shopping center in Poughkeepsie has directional signs that say tenants, you know, names.
Can the board hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm with Sue, I'm sorry, I'm Bob with the GNS group, uh, we're gonna manufacture the signs for, for us and Heritage. After last meeting, I, I thought this was all just a formality with design, um, I didn't realize there was actually talk of maybe we needed more signs, I thought, from the board after we had talked for a while. This is not, this is not, this is not the Poughkeepsie Galleria, a single freestanding building, you know, there's been multiple, multiple commercial buildings, uh, with tenants on all sides, i- in all different parking lots. I'm, I'm a bit surprised that there, there's any kind of friction for any kind of directional signage. The South Coast Mall and the Poughkeepsie Galleria have signs, um, what we're asking for is it probably 10% of what their directional signage is, and there's, this is all freestanding commercial buildings. I'm, I'm, I'm just a bit confused as to where we were coming in at this from the last meeting.
Um, miss, uh, let me just clarify for a moment, um, I read the county's recommendation because it arrived more than, just a couple of hours ago, and it was not clear whether, and we passed it on to the board by email, so it was not, it's a required referral and response by the county in order for the board to take any action. Staff was not endorsing, uh, the county's comments, I was passing them along. In fact, the staff recommendation, um, considers, suggests that the board discuss with the applicant first the, the size of the signs to be proposed, making, you know, we suggested that the board may or may not wanna make a distinction between tenant signs, signs and shopping district signs. We weren't proposing, we weren't recommending denial, um, or, or, or granting, but leaving that open to board discussion, that they focus on, first on the size of the signs and what's on them, and then secondly, the number, where they might be located, um, and the particular design for them, and that, that's what the staff recommendation consisted of.
Thank you Burke.
I thought last time we had discussed that that center sign would be, would have less things on it, because it would just have to point to shop right and maybe one other thing, and say shops ahead, or, but in any case, we'll, uh, we'll go around the board for, for board members' comments. Personally, I like the, uh, appreciate you've given us some concept, different concepts. I like the, the brick V version 3 with the little brick base, or the metal version 2. Seems to, you know, less, less bulk overall. So we'll go around, we'll go around the board.
This sign appears twice the size of the original proposed sign.
Yeah, with the double, the double brick columns, and you had, you had said that with all the stonework, it may not, may look bulky, so that, glad you're showing it. So let's move on to, uh, other board members and see what they think, uh, Peter?
This is a large, complex campus, and I, you know, I honestly don't have any problem with the third sign. I think it's, you know, it's gonna be very helpful, and I like the metal concept, the metal version 2, the V2. And that, those are my comments.
Alright, thanks Peter, Ben?
I, I like, uh, the brick version 3, it's compact, it's easy to read, there's not a lot taken away from the signage with, you know, posts and things like that, and it's neat, and I, I do agree that we do need the signs.
Alright, Nicole?
Yep, I also liked V3, um, as well as either V1 or V2. That, um, metal is very, very nice, I like that, um, kind of goes back to some of, some of the, um, architecture from the buildings and stuff, so.
Alright, we're gonna have to try to settle on what our choices here, see what everybody thinks. Rocco?
Uh, I like, uh, brick concept V3, I think that fits in very nicely with the, with the site there, and I'm in agreement that, uh, we, we need the signs, uh, on the site.
Alright, and Joan?
I like the, um, the metalwork signs, in particular, I like V2 the best, I think it's very pretty, and I'm in agreement that we need the signs, and if we can do all three, I think that's appropriate.
Alright, uh, let's go to Ahmed. Do you have a preference?
Uh, for, for a person like me, signs are very helpful, and wherever there is intersection, especially if they are far apart, having one is very, very useful. And as for one, uh, my first one is the brick concept V3, uh, I like the design and the shape.
Alright, um, and myself, I, uh, that was my first, uh, reaction was the V3, the brick V3 looked better to me, I could see the scroll work looks nice on the metal, but could, take your eyes away from trying to read the actual sign perhaps.
Listen, in the, in the interest of moving the ball forward, I mean, I could live with V3, it's fine.
Okay, just wondering.
How about Rock?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that too, I'm not gonna, it's fine.
Yeah, V3 is good.
It works for us, because we can reuse the brick from the admin, you know, the admin.
Yep, that sounds good. Alright, it looks like we're settling on, on the brick V3, it just has the base, so that, I mean, it gives a more narrow appearance of the overall signs, or it looks less, less, uh, in the way of things.
Can I ask Erica a question?
Sure.
Erica, like, do we need to be particular in our reasoning for three signs to satisfy the county's requirement? Or, like, do we need to, to put more out there in support of three signs?
Well, they just said that, they, they thought that two directional signs at the key northern and southern intersections are sufficient to navigate the site. So I think if you, if you want to be contrary to their recommendation, you should just indicate as to why, you know, that you think three is, the reason that you think three is appropriate instead of two.
Didn't you say it was a majority two that would decide?
And they, and they also, um, they also thought that the signage on the sign should be limited to the, something like the shop, the directional sign for the, pointing to the shops and parking rather than the tenants. So that if you think that there should also be the tenant signage on there as well, then you should provide a reason for that.
We're, we're in the midst of an economy where it's very difficult to attract commercial tenants. And I think the, the more a landlord has to offer in terms of incentives for potential tenancy, I think we have, we have to go the extra mile.
Yeah, I would agree, and also, we don't want people driving all around the site trying to find a location. The idea is we want them to park, we want them to walk around, take in all the amenities that the site has to offer, and so I think the more information we can provide on a sign, the more likelihood it is that we'll accomplish that end.
There are numerous intersections on that.
Peter, you, you just, I was about to, I was about to say that, that, I think is, is the critical piece in terms of safety and, and why it would be important for this board to, to determine, no, we believe three signs is, is critical, is because of that, there's another intersection.
Sure.
Yeah. Got it?
I mean, it's possible.
So that would take care of the number, that would take care of the number, uh, going for the three instead of the two, and then just a reason for the additional tenant signage, I guess as Peter said, would be, uh, would be to support the economics of the site function.
Absolutely.
And, and also efficiency of, of travel, I, I think the applicant had indicated that, you know, there's about a fourth of, a quarter of a mile separation from certain locations, and, uh, when you walk into an entrance. And the board probably doesn't wanna see vehicles just kinda circling around the site, looking for wherever they're trying to go, their destination, so.
It's a, it's a safety thing, we don't want people coming in here, driving all around in these parking lots, you know, looking for buildings, we wanna keep them on the road, and so they can turn into the correct parking area that where their destination is.
May I turn the question around, why would the county have this, these conditions?
They generally.
And we ask them for a reason?
They, they often.
I, I wouldn't, I, I don't. Yeah, I, I don't, it's not required, and they, they did, they basically, they provided the letter that they submitted to you with the same, their same recommendation last September, and that's, that's their reasoning. But I don't think you need to respond to it, it's basically, uh, they register their opinion, and then the planning board, uh, you know, retains the right of site plan approval and simply needs to identify its reason, which I think you've done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, David, this is Mike, a quick question, um, when, if, if it appears that the board will, um, will vote to, you know, over supersede the, uh, the county's recommendation, which is fine, um, are we, I believe we're supposed to send a, a written report back to the county, you wanna just help us draft that up for, uh, for this one?
Yes, yeah, um, I, I think, yes, I, I absolutely will, and to the extent that you wanna adopt a resolution, we may wanna just prepare one for the, for the next meeting, just to, to adopt.
I would sooner, I would sooner do that, this as just conditional tonight, and then, uh.
Yeah.
Right.
But, sorry, that's what I meant, yeah, conditional.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally, I'm in favor of less signs is better, but in some, in, uh, certain, and I like monument signs more than pole signs, that kinda stuff, it's just sometimes we have overs, oversignage, and I know that's probably where the county's coming from, but, but I think Peter brings up an important, uh, concept that, uh, you know, the economy is what it is, and, and some of these stores require this as part of their contract, so. I think that the, the vote is for the brick, the small brick base, concept V3, and, uh, we should move ahead with some motions.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan and architectural review approval for the Hudson Heritage Directional Signs Application, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included up, but not limited to the following. One through six, uh, including seven, in which there will be three signs of the small brick concept V3 to put tenant names on the sign instead of just shops.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Next up, we have Raymond Avenue School Property Redevelopment. You out there somewhere?
Still here.
Still there Jacob, huh? Need a second cup of coffee?
Just finished mine.
I got an espresso machine in the back, just in case.
Yeah, there it is.
Uh, so good evening, everybody, uh, my name is Jacob Reckes from Arthur May Redevelopment, we appreciate you taking the time to let us present tonight. What we're presenting and hoping to get some feedback from you all is some direction, uh, comments and feedback on a concept. The concept is something that we're excited about, it still has pieces that need to be resolved, um, but in, in general, as Ann mentioned, and we appreciate her support, we ran into some trouble, in, in general, it's to save the school and make the building, the, the site more efficient, uh, more energy efficient, and I think user-friendly. As a little bit of background, uh, we were hoping to be in the ground building already, uh, last November. We ran into some cost increases in our project plans, and it forced us to review and do some value engineering. In that process, we brought in some extra consultants, and we came up and found a few exciting opportunities. As Ann mentioned, combining the buildings allows us to hit, uh, a more energy-efficient building plan, and we'd really like to get to a National Green Building Standard, so we're excited that that's gonna be part of the plan. We had made a commitment, I think this is the most significant piece, we'd made a commitment that until the day we knock down the school, we're gonna continue to explore every opportunity to save that building, uh, it, it was pretty important to us. We, in order to do that, we need a credible tenant and user. We had somebody approach us, and we were in a few conversations about a credible tenant, we needed to find a way to make that work. And so what's exciting to us is that our engineering team and our consultants came up with a creative, really smart plan that in essence, by simply, by simply, by adjusting the elevation, what, what's hard to notice is that the ground currently increases slightly from Raymond Avenue up to where the school is, so the ground floor of the building, when you walk there right now, is actually halfway below grade. By changing the elevation a little bit, we can do some work on the ground floor and flatten it out, and then end up with, uh, commercial space with an actual flat floor that you would walk in at grade, so you turn it from two and a half floors to three floors. It's still not a panacea, but we had made a commitment that if we can make it work in any way, we would do it. Before we keep going too far, we wanted to get the feedback of the planning board and make sure that we're going down the right path, because there are still some, uh, pieces to, to work out. Another major component that we're excited about is that by moving the courtyard from in between buildings A and B, and Ann mentioned this also, we are, we, we moved. we are, we we moved it to the left side of the entrance, which is the southern part of the entrance, which is actually the vaster side of the entrance, where we think a lot more people are going to be walking up and down the street. It's a bigger site, uh, it's a bigger piece of land, and our vision for that is that becomes a meeting place on Raymond Avenue. Uh, we're going to put either a sculpture piece or a bandstand for people to meet, grab a cup of coffee, and it becomes an actual location. We'd we'd be very open and interested to talk about the potential dedicating that and maybe using that. We know we have a a recreation fee and dedicating that as recreation land as a part of that. But we think it's a a great central location. So I'm going to turn over to our esteemed team over at Chazen right now and let them go through a couple of details. I know it's late. And then I'll come back and we'll show an image of the of the uh, open space.
Awesome. Thanks, Jacob. Um, my name is Kyle Bardwell from the Chazen Companies. I've been working on this project over the past few years. We submitted back in June where we received site plan and subdivision approval. And I'm excited, I'm excited to talk to you guys tonight about some of the changes we've made since then. Um, so I'm going to share my screen and pull up the current site plan. Is there a way that I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
So here's the new site plan. So I'm just going to briefly walk through some of the changes. I know it's been a long night, so go through this quickly. I'm going to pass it over to Stu to talk about some of our process. So before, there was a small courtyard between buildings A and B, and now we combine them, so there's one congruent building. Like Jacob said, there was a building right up against Raymond Avenue before, which we pushed further into the site to allow for a nice green space amenity area. Um, in the previous submittal, we were proposing a five-story hotel here. As Jacob said, we're going to be utilizing the existing two-story school now. Um, with that, there's going to be a small addition to allow for a nice formal entrance on the west side of the school. Another change was back at building C, we had a six-story building, which is now going to a five-story. So with some of these changes, um, we actually had, with the change in use, we had a reduction in the parking requirement from the town code from three forty-nine to two fifty-eight. Um, and this allowed us to do some exciting stuff with the property. So with it, we reduced a row of parking here in the northwest area of the site, which reduced a good amount of rock cut and also allowed for a flat snow storage area. With that, we also have a nice amount of green space to the south of the existing school building that we can utilize. And one thing to bring up is with utilizing the existing school, we have a one-way road now that goes around the north side of the building. Others than that, all the drive aisles and parking areas are mostly in the same exact position than they were in the June submission in which we received approval. So. With this new site plan, we have reduced the overall impervious on the site by a total of approximately fifteen percent, which is, you know, great with stormwater. Um, we'll, we're allowed to keep some of the tree line here in the northwest part of the property. Um, and overall, I think all these changes have really made it a nice, a nice project. Um, so I'm going to pass it over to Stu, who's going to talk a little bit about the process of this project and where we're headed. Um, so Stu, if you want to take over.
You can just leave that up, I think. Thanks, Kyle. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again. Uh, it's been a while. Um, I I admire your stamina. Um, but I will say it's a lot easier to attend a meeting this way than sitting in the hard chairs for four hours. So uh, so there's that benefit. Otherwise, beyond that, though, I do miss seeing everybody. Um, I just wanted to talk for a couple of minutes about the um, the secret and the environmental uh, piece of this. Just by way of background, um, in November of two thousand and nineteen, the planning board granted uh, the original conditional approval. And then we came back with a modified site plan um, next year. And in July of last year, you granted um, site plan approval uh, to the plan. At that time, we submitted to you, um, we call them secret comparison memos that just look at the um, differences between the two plans um, in order that you could make a secret finding that was consistent with the original um, negative declaration, or in this case, the, I believe the town board did that. Um, so we did the same thing again for this plan, um, and you should have in your packet the memo. And I won't go through it in a great deal of detail, because I think the conclusion should be fairly obvious. Um, it's it's a somewhat downsized project in terms of metrics. Um, there's a few more dwelling units, although actually only two different than the original approval. But um, replacing the hotel with the reuse of the school has lowered our parking demand. Um, it results in less traffic generation. Um, there's less water demand, there's less sewer uh, generation, there's less solid waste um, uh, generation. The project is smaller in terms of height and visibility. Um, there's less parking. Recall in the uh, pre prior plan, we had shared parking, and we had some concerns about the need to clear off spaces um, uh, when we have winters like we're having this time. Um, and so we we've now solved that um, with a with a dedicated snow storage area. And um, the second most exciting thing I think about the project is the little pocket park on Raymond Avenue, um, which is, I think, a really lovely space. And um, it 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 can help create a focal point um, between vaster down the street and the commercial district down the street in this project. But um, but the most exciting thing about the project is I is that um, we've sort of at the eleventh hour been able to save the school, which I know is something that everybody would have liked to have had in the first place, and I think you folks did a really excellent job of um, uh, understanding why we didn't think we could and um, reluctantly agreeing to to what the plan was, but um, we've we found a way to keep it. Um, we've been in contact with SHPO, and um, on the back of that school, there's two um, more recent additions, which don't contribute in any way to its historic character.
Yep.
And in your packet, um, there's correspondence from SHPO um, indicating that they agree they're not contributing and that there's no impact there. So um, we think it would be appropriate for the planning board to make a finding that um, this project is consistent with prior secret determination, um, would not have any significant adverse impacts, and and honestly, uh, has fewer impacts um, than the prior plan. And and I've been hearing you um, make uh, make those, make those resolutions all night. So I'm hoping um, that that'll be an outcome of uh, of your process here. So um, that's, that's what I wanted to talk about with respect to um, overview and environmental review. I think Jacob um, was just going to talk a little bit about um, uh, design and appearance, and then we'll um, we're we're happy to try to answer questions and and hear your feedback.
Alright, thanks, Stu.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Stu. And and just to clarify one thing, because I think there is something important and and that should be said, which is that we really want to take on commitments that we can do, and so we, uh, Stuart is presenting this as a done deal. There's still work to be done. There's still some open items and questions, which is why we wanted to come with to you guys first for a general sense of feedback. Um, and and we have to work out the user and the school, but this was a a point in time where we wanted to get the general direction from the planning board. Um, what you're seeing here was really an intent to understand the the open space, the green space on Raymond Avenue. Uh, the buildings, the school building is already there and designed. Um, the the building in the back and the building in the front, uh, we understand needs to be uh, in line with what the what the local community uh, feels like, and so we're going to work to make sure that that happens. So we don't really want to show this to you guys and say this is the final building, but uh, this is the concept, and we're hoping to get some feedback.
Alright, thanks, Jacob. I had one quick question. Uh, you were showing the walkway from this, from the uh, school entrance coming out to the middle of the the new big building. Is that, is there a way to get passed through so people from living in that building could get through to the front of the stores on Raymond Avenue?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. There is a door from behind, um, so there is the physical possibility. I think that will be an operational question that we'll have to think about just making sure that there's security for all the tenants that use that for their residential entrances.
Right.
Um, but I think there's a couple of options that we can think about.
Trying to think of a, so versus uh, somebody living there have to walk all the way around to get to a store on the other side. But.
Yeah.
It's it's just something to think, there's something to cross my mind. Alright, let's um, move on. Um, we go to who's got this one? Eric?
Uh, this was presented to the planning board as an item for discussion and feedback uh, prior to the submittal of a proposed amendment, uh, which is anticipated shortly after this. Um, so to that end, the board's free to discuss it. Um, the, we provided, it does seem to be a plan much in keeping with the previous one, with a lot of extra benefits. Uh, we've identified a few points for discussion in our recommendation. The board will have, they have its own questions. So um, we, the one thing we did add as an action for the board, uh, based on discussion with staff and the planning board attorney, the previous seeker uh, was conducted by the town board on the site plan, and that seeker did not include the subdivision. And our understanding from the submittal is that it also includes subdivision, for which the planning board acted as the lead agency as a separate action. So the uh, discussion, you know, with 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 legal and staff was that the easiest thing to do was to uh, restart seeker right away. And we advanced that as a proactive step at this meeting um, in order to expedite it. Um, and then the board could make use of the previous seeker actions with um, you know, in its, in essentially arriving at the same thing that Stuart was suggesting. Uh, finding of consistency with the previous determinations with whatever incremental, with whatever the incremental analysis shows, much as the board did with Eastdale Village and some other projects where there have been amendments with changes to the plan. So I don't see that as uh, slowing down the process at all. Um, but we have provided that for your consideration. Uh, Lisa, I'll ask if if there's anything else to add to that in terms of seeker procedure, then please speak up.
No, I have nothing to add. I think that's fine.
Okay. So with that, the board, uh, you know, was invited to discuss it.
Yep.
Um, and to consider the 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 secret resolution we suggested to start the process and move it quickly.
Alright, thanks, Eric. Uh, Don, do you have any initial take on the the changes?
Uh, nope, not at this point.
Alright, thanks. Less parking, less uh, stormwater, all that is goodness. Alright, let's uh, go on to board for comments. We'll start with uh, Nicole.
Uh, yeah, so um, I guess one of my biggest questions was the the C one, C two building. Why is it? Why is the open space to the back? That was my question.
Yeah, that is a good question. So we had a lot of discussion about whether it should be a U facing the street or a U facing the back. And where we ended up is that the site will have really beautiful views of the valley out the west. So the tenants who live there, if we put the the U on the on the left, which is the west side, all the tenants on the interior get blocked from having those views. If the building is on this side, the tenants have the views out the west. Uh, the other reason was it created almost like a private uh, green space for amenities, for amenity use out the back. Uh, whereas if it came in the front, it would let itself more to being a parking area and it just have a different feel. So this this felt more residential.
Okay, that's what I thought. Um, another question I had, and and this might be a little too early to ask the question, but um, do you guys have any um, any idea as far as phasing is concerned? Like, how long do you think this project is going to take, and how are you going to phase it out?
So the logic is to start with the building up front and the school renovations, if we can do this, and then move on to the building behind. Our goal would be to do them as close to each other as possible, and then building E would come later. And so we'd start in the front and move to the back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any, any idea about how many years that that build out would take then, Jacob?
Uh, our goal is to do it as as quickly as possible. We'd love to start this year as soon as we can get all the pieces done with the the building up front and the school, and then within a year, start on the building in the back.
Okay, great. Thanks. Go to uh, Rocco.
Okay, uh, it might, it might be earlier, Jacob, but you have any idea of maybe uh, uh, what the commercial mix might be? And I've uh, I've got a reason why I'm asking. Especially in in buildings A and B. I think the first floor is going to be commercial?
Uh, the front half of the first floor is commercial, yeah.
Oh, the front half of the, okay. So uh, well, uh, if some of that uh, involves restaurants, uh, do you have enough of a setback there for outdoor seating there?
Yeah, we actually have a, uh, this is on the front building on A B, Kyle.
Right.
Uh, so why don't you zoom in there? So that's another piece that Chazen came up with, which we actually really like. There's a I I believe it's either eight to ten feet of, there there's the five-foot sidewalk on Raymond Avenue. And then there's an eight-to-ten-foot private patio in front of the commercial spaces. So it kind of acts as its own private space. Kyle, do you want to walk through what's in front of that patio? You'll you'll describe it better.
Sure. So we have separating the um, sidewalk on Raymond Avenue. We're going to have a small curved planter. Um, and this is going to make up the small amount of grade basically from our sidewalk that goes along buildings A and B. So that could be a flat walkway for users. Um, so you can see kind of in bold here where this curb planter would be. So people would access our sidewalk via a ramp or stairs down here. Then we would have a clear access point right here from the sidewalk right into the front of the building. Then we would have another, you know, curb planter right here, and then we would have access to Raymond Avenue sidewalk up here as well. So this would be a nice kind of like amenity between the two sidewalks, you know, to separate the two uses.
And what they did is they they reduced the number of steps in front of those spaces so that it's easier to access the the commercial space.
Sounds good.
Okay. So you think, I mean, alright, I'll wait until uh, there's more detail.
I'm curious and intrigued in the idea.
I like where you're going. It's just a part of the, part of question, and and uh, and it's way too early right now, is that if you have a restaurant there in the middle of where those planters are, uh, having access to stores on either side?
Yeah.
Right, that, like I said, I'm way, I'm way ahead here, but I like where you're going, and it looks good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rocco. Uh, Ben?
Yeah, I I think this is great. It's a big improvement over the original design. I'm glad to see that you took the time to think out all these things and you know, saving all that you said you're coming up with. On the, on the school building, that's got a pitched roof on it, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. When make, when make, when to make it an apartment, is it going to change the exterior of the building a lot?
No, so the top two floors will stay the same, and the roof will stay the same. We'll have to fix it up. Um, you know, it's a, it's been, it's been there for a while, so we'll have to fix it up and make it sturdy. Uh, it's actually a slant roof in the middle central section, and then flat roofs on both sides. And so the concept would be to convert the second and third floor classrooms into apartments, and they'll be, I mean, they'll be awesome. It it, there'll be eleven-foot ceilings or or higher. Um, lots of window space in the units. They'll be, it has the potential to be really great spaces.
Good, good. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Ben. Let's see, Joan?
Hi there. Um, I agree. I think it's a really nice revisioning of the space and um, keeping the school. Going to Nicole's question about phasing, do you think you would be doing the school part in conjunction with the construction of the front buildings, or would it be the front buildings complete and then hop into the rehabbing and repurposing the school? Or would you be doing it at the same time? and repurposing the school, or would you be doing it at the same time?
Yeah, good question. I, I think the challenge that we've been struggling with is, is cost, so it's, it's much, gonna be much more efficient to mobilize at the same time than both together.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it looks good. I'm excited to see future submissions.
Alright, thanks Joan. Ahmed?
It is, I mean, as I see it, very good, and really, it goes with the revitalization of the whole area. I mean, I, I love what's coming down the pipeline for Raymond Avenue and the town of Poughkeepsie, and following up with the city of Poughkeepsie. I mean, this is gonna pull a lot of energy in, in, in the town and the city.
Amen.
So, I'm looking forward to see the fruits.
Alright.
Sounds good, and then Peter?
Okay, man.
Alright, myself, uh, I love that you've, uh, you've satisfied a lot of people that you're trying to keep the, the school here. There was a lot of this source of public comment, uh, early on. You, with doing the stores down below, does that mean the, the stairs go away in the front as well?
Uh, on the building up front?
The school. The current stairs up to the...
Yeah, this, so that's a good point, sorry, sorry, right. So the, so the ground floor will become the first floor, and the stairs will come away, and there'll be a new entrance where the stairs are located.
Gotcha.
Your entrance will enter into the, into the new ground floor.
That's, that's good, you could grade that away in such a way to make use of that.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, let's see, I did a couple other comments here. Uh, what happens to the...
Would be handing handicap accessible also?
The school will have handicap access to some of the units. The, that's one of the pieces that I'm gonna defer to our architect to work through, uh, 'cause it's a listed historic eligible building, so, uh, we're trying to figure that piece out.
Yeah, there's no elevator in it currently, right?
No elevator, right.
So we have to figure out what can be done there.
And, and to be blunt, it's gonna, I mean, it's a very tight, I mean, the spaces are gonna be amazing. The finances on the building have always been the challenge, so, so we're, you know, it's, it's gonna be tight, so we're giving the architect and Chazen and our team a real challenge, but, you know, we're hopeful.
And what happens to the, you know, middle between the apartments was clubhouse, is that still, those amenities are still there somehow?
Yeah, so the amenities in the site stay, uh, in the, in C. What we did is by lowering from six to, to stories to five stories, again, we're able to make it a little bit more efficient. We also switched from steel to wood, which, uh, helps on, on construction cost. By, and the way that we got to the same number of units is that we spread the, the legs of the building out a little bit, and we filled over the clubhouse with units, so that's how we got to the same number of units. And the other advantage to that is what I was mentioning to Nicole's, the views out to the west are really fantastic, and so now the legs are spread a little bit further. There's more space in between the units, and people should have better views.
Okay, great. Uh, any ideas at this point about, uh, you know, you took away that parking there south of the hotel, or south of the, the school, so is there any ideas for that green area there, just grass or some other amenity, a band shelter or anything?
Yeah, that's a good question. We were excited that we were able to fit, uh, in essence, because it was the hotel entrance, we, we felt like we needed that drive lane. We got the same number of parking spaces by putting the parking on the east and west of it, and so now we have some grass, and so I think that's a good point, we should think about what to do with that.
You have the public, public, yeah, the public parking, uh, sorry, the public, uh, pocket park is up front on Raymond Avenue there, but you gotta explore, uh, you know, what, what, uh, could be there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think what got us excited is it, it allowed for more green space for the tenants to use. It just feels more spacious.
Maybe a gazebo or something, who knows? Anyway, uh, you can figure that out, I'm sure. Uh, my last comment, I guess, is the, uh, just overall, my, the architecture I think is gonna be key, because, you know, putting these buildings together, they become more massive. And it's not uncommon to see, you know, a long streetscape of buildings, but, uh, make sure that architecturally they all work out. Whether it's some bump outs or different roof lines or whatever.
Uh, that's exactly what we were thinking, and mixing up the materials, the colors, roof lines, to make it feel like they're not, it's not one long building.
Alright, I think everybody's kind of in agreement with this here.
Alright, we'll do our...
Nicole, you wanna do a motion?
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be the lead agency. Upon receipt by the planning department of an amended planning board application, EAF, and materials determined by staff to be sufficient for circulation to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type one action, and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Second. Moved in second, moved in seconded, called the question by roll call vote. Peter's refused on this one, uh, Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes six to zero. Well...
Thank you guys.
Wish you, wish you luck in, uh, getting the plans worked out, and, uh...
Yeah, Jacob, let us know if you need any help, uh, getting some coordination with, you know, I know there's some infrastructure questions and other things that we should work out sooner rather than later, right?
Alright, we appreciate it. Thank you guys, thank you guys, take care.
Move it along.
Have a good night everyone.
Bye-bye, have a good night.
Hey, we've got a time extension for Rogers Lot Line Revision, so I moved that the planning board grant one sixty-day time extension for the Rogers Lot Line Revision.
Second.
Application. The expiration date from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one to April sixteen, two thousand twenty-one. Moved in seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have one more item on the agenda tonight, and, uh, Mike, you want to say anything about that?
Uh, last night, the, uh, town, uh, town board, um, adopt, you know, passed a resolution to, uh, get the process started on extending the, the moratorium, which was set to expire, uh, in the early part of March, I think March, or about March seventh. And so, um, they set a public hearing for March third, and they, uh, because it's kind of re-adopting this, uh, this interim local law, right? They, uh, they're referring it to the planning board, and, um, like they did last time. And so I thought it would be good if we could get this on for tonight, uh, to get a recommendation back to the town board prior to their public hearing on March third. So if, uh, I guess if, you know, no one has any objections to this, I think, you know, there is progress being made, um, uh, which I think I've mentioned to you before, you know, on, on some draft zoning language, there's a, uh, subcommittee of the town board that's been working with David, who's still on tonight, um, and, and with myself and Jim Nelson. So, you know, progress is being made, but not surprisingly, it's, they, they, they do need a little bit more time to complete that work, and ultimately to get something adopted. And so that's why they've gone ahead and, um, uh, suggested extending this for another ninety days. I don't know, David, do you have anything else to add to that?
Uh, no, I think that's a good explanation, I can answer any procedural questions if you'd like, but, um, it's...
I mean, we don't want, don't want it to drag out, uh, too long, you know, leave people, leave applicants hanging, but, uh, we have to come up with the, how we're gonna move forward on some of these applications.
This is the first request to, uh, for an extension, right?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Right, I think the board, the last time around, just stated that they, if I remember correctly, and somebody will correct me, that the board didn't really have an opinion as to the propriety of the moratorium, and just left it up to the town board. So I don't know if the board now collectively has an opinion, or if the board collectively wants to, to do the same thing they did last time and just leave it up to the town board.
Yep, that was my...
What you said.
That was my next question, and I, thanks for asking it Lisa, so that's... And is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, I am.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, in that case, I move that the planning board make no recommendation, positive or negative, to the town board concerning the proposed moratorium, and find that is a, it is a matter of town board discretion.
Second.
Good. Second.
Moved in seconded, called the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Anyone else have any...
Good night all, good to see you.
Go Raiders!
That's right, it's good season so far.
Anybody else have any, uh...
Good night.
Any other requests or comments?
I move that we terminate this evening's meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved in, seconded, called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, drive safely.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Get to bed safely. Good night.
Good night.